Thank you, everyone. This is the regular meeting of October 22nd of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees. The meeting to order and after the roll call, we will have a pledge of allegiance. So if anyone wants to join in at that point, that'd be great.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff? Present. Brizot? Absent. Carey?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
Riser?
Present.
We have Quorum.
All right, please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the public.
Right, the first item, adoption of the agenda. There are a couple of corrections or additions to the agenda. Been specified, but during the introductions and recognitions, we'll have an opportunity to introduce the board to Michael Simpson, who was our candidate for work at the fire department. And also I had offered or agreed to reread the revolution honoring Donna during that time, recognition period. The model motion for H9 was inadvertently omitted by me. So if everyone could just jot down that the model motion for that item is to authorize the clerk to sign and submit the attached application and budget. The other thing is to remove item I2, which is the Sciop Township Hall HBAC study review. We are moving that from this agenda to probably the November 12th agenda. And are there any other changes to the agenda?
I have one. I wanted to just, in light of the public that's here, suggest that we move L1 off, if we could, to after the consent agenda.
Well, I would prefer not to make all of the people who are here for reports wait. Can we move it to the top of unfinished business instead?
Well, I think the, I think the reports, I think we've got about an hour and a half or so of the boards.
Oh, I don't know, it's been that long.
So.
Well, I would, I would agree to move it to the top of before unfinished business if that's an acceptable compromise.
Will process suggestion, why don't you take some of these motions one by one?
Right. For the adjustment to item L1, it's proposed to move that item from new business to immediately after the consent agenda.
After H12?
Yeah.
Presumably, yes, but not onto the consent agenda. So I guess that would be an equivalent to moving new business to follow the consent agenda.
Yep, so I think we have, I moved that.
Right, it moved by Flintoff, support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Per rules of order, we're starting with Noel. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carey?
Yes.
Motion adopted, five one.
All right, the other changes to the agenda. With that change added, is someone prepared to move the agenda as modified?
No, I would like to.
Is there further a change to the agenda?
Yes, to remove H7, consent to new business.
Okay, so.
I support that.
New business is now immediately following the consent agenda, so.
Or is new business or just L1?
Well, we moved, we moved new business. That's the way I phrased it. So we moved new business to follow the consent agenda.
My, my motion was L1, but I would be open to moving both of those items.
All right, so let's place that with.
It went with the support of my second.
It's okay, I, I voted on L1, no, not the whole.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Well, I characterized the motion, the modification to the agenda as moving new business, and it was agreed to. So if we're moving that item from the consent agenda, we're also moving it to new business with the other item of new business.
Okay.
Any other changes to the agenda? Having done, is someone prepared to move the agenda as modified?
I would move the agenda, as we've modified it.
All right, is there a second?
One second.
All right, so moved by Riser, supported by Carey.
Have a clarifying question, so it's clear. So the order after consent is, would be?
L1, H7?
I believe so.
Okay, I would propose a friendly change to your motion, Riser, is to have it go H7 to L1.
Okay. Oh. She looked at me as.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
I'm fine, you're fine, you know.
I think that'll be a shorter item.
Okay.
Okay, so the agenda then, as modified, is, I think we've got it all set, everyone understands it.
Support that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the agenda as modified is adopted. That brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees. Is there any comment on the communications?
I'm sure it's current through October 18th. Apologies for not being able to update for ones that came in subsequent, though they'll appear in the next packet. Just want to note in particular, the October 2nd submission of invoice as a claim for payment by Jillian Carey to the township and the two initial determinations by the insurance company from May 11th, I mean from May 22nd and July 11th that are contained in there.
Okay, thank you. Well, that brings us to introductions and recognitions. Mr. Simpson, if you would like to come forward.
Good evening, board, thank you. Talk a little bit briefly about the process we got here, and I'll allow Mr. Simpson to introduce himself. Earlier in the, in the spring, we anticipated one retirement and three new hires in the fire department. He's a third-party testing company to do our preliminary testing for firefighter. From that list, we drew, excuse me, 23 names that had indicated they were willing to work in Sciop Township and had, and had passed all of our screening criteria. We submitted, gave them all applications. From that, we got nine applications back. Folks, some chose not to apply to Sciop. Some already had jobs and declined, and other folks had left the fire service. From those nine, two captains and myself conducted interviews where we ranked and scored the various candidates. From there, some were disqualified. We had one gentleman who made a false statement on his application, and during the interview, we caught that and removed it. And from that scoring process, we developed an eligibility list. We hired Mr. Newsom to replace Captain Burke. And then our next three candidates were brought to the board late spring for consideration. One of them has subsequently withdrawn from consideration as he took a job in Lansing. Mr. Simpson is our next candidate on the list. If we choose, if we choose to offer him a conditional offer today, the board chooses to do so, we conduct a background investigation, a psychological exam, and a physical. With that, introduce Mr. Michael Simpson, and I have a couple of seconds.
Hi, everybody, nice to meet everybody. I've gotten the opportunity to talk to a couple of you already, and I just have to say, it's been a pleasure to speak with a few of you and meet. Everyone's very welcoming, and it makes it a very, very welcoming, warm place to potentially, hopefully, work for a career. So I just want to say, not too much for words, so just thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to seeing all of you in the future.
Aurora, did you want to add?
Well, only he has my recommendation, full support also.
Great, thank you, board.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the other item for this section of the agenda is a recognition. This is the resolution that we adopted at our previous meeting. Unfortunately, Treasurer Palmer was not present, so she didn't hear the resolution. So bear with me, we'll, I'll read this through one more time. And I know the occasion, I will be happy to do so. Whereas Donna Palmer has faithfully served the people of Sciop Township as treasurer since 1987, and whereas during her tenure, Donna Palmer has collected over $2 billion in tax revenue, and whereas Donna Palmer has attended more than 900 meetings of the Board of Trustees and participated in numerous momentous votes, including the formation of the Sciop Township's Fire Department, the creation of its water and sewer districts, and the transformation of Jackson Road by the addition of the Bullefire. And whereas Donna Palmer has spent countless hours meeting with taxpayers and talking with them on the phone to resolve their tax process questions. And whereas throughout the years, Donna has been a voice for fiscal responsibility and prudent use of public funds. And whereas Donna Palmer has always been friendly and supportive colleague, trading stories about each other's children and grandchildren, and in her case, great-grandchildren, because as Donna says, family comes first. Now, therefore be it resolved that Sciop Township residents, visitors, and businesses thank Donna Palmer for her years of dedicated service and be it further resolved that we all hope for a long and enjoyable retirement for Donna Palmer. All right. That brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. And we, our practice is to have comments first from those who are present here at Township Hall, and then to turn to those who are participating remotely. I ask everyone to please do honor the three-minute time limit, that's a matter of respect for everybody and for our agenda, and also to direct your comments to the Board of Trustees and not to each other. You willing to serve as timekeeper, trustee Riser?
All right.
Someone would like to speak during public comment, please come forward, have a seat at the table.
Hey, Spicer, 525 Baker Road. My, my, I have a comment or a question I could say, I don't can't answer right now, but I would like to know how long does a developer have to start a project? I'm talking about Heritage Woods. And have they donated the money to the fire department like they said they were going to do? Those are my questions, and hopefully maybe you can be answered some other time, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Patinson, Sciop Township President. Before I begin, I arrived early today to talk to Chief Hood and Michael Simpson, and my comments are about the concept of this particular hire. They do not reflect any opinion about his past as an individual. Tonight's item H7 is not about hiring Michael Simpson. I know that many of you have met him and support hiring him. Hiring an individual is not, not the point, protecting the established team is. Michael Simpson has a DUI in his history where a death occurred. Our firefighters put their lives in each other's hands every time they leave the station. Personally, I could never do that with someone who has galactically screwed up the way this candidate has. It could be Jesus, and the answer would still be thank you, but no, you can't put a life-taker on a team of lifesavers. I believe inserting this, that kind of tension and potential friction into our small team of firefighters will be like inserting a cancer. We finally have the best fire department this township has ever had. That precious resource needs to be protected. Please ask Chief Hood to come back with a more appropriate client. The risk is too great with this one. Mr. Simpson, Mr. Simpson needs to go to a large fire department where they have multiple fire stations. That way, if his history causes friction, he can be moved to another station. We don't have that luxury. I applaud Mr. Simpson for turning his life around and wish him the best for the future. Supervisor Hathaway, you oppose pacing, paying trustee Kerry's legal expenses. A few years ago, when you didn't like the legal advice you got from the finks, you went out and hired your own personal attorney, Mike Homier. I know you will say the board voted to approve his hiring, but you lied to that board and told that Mr. Homier would help the finks. Instead, he took over and attended board meetings at $275 an hour on Zoom for a long time before we discovered that he was doing so. So your predicted explanation that Mr. Homier was a township attorney doesn't hold up to the truth test. Every time he gave an opinion, it was to your advantage in whatever discussion was going on. That was his job, to be your own personal pit bull. You spent over $166,000 on Mike Homier. Tonight, when you oppose doing the same for trustee Kerry, please explain why it's okay to pay for your attorney, but not hers. In one of trustee Brizot's letter to trustee Kerry, he said that what she had written was nicely written by your attorney, unquote. That ignorance, the ignorance that insult represents is trustee Brizot's true self. Not only is he a coward for leaving the board meeting early to avoid public feedback on his vote, we can now add insulting misogynist to the list of his character flaws. I again ask this board to remove him and put someone in that seat who actually cares about Sciop Township residents. Lastly, supervisor Hathaway, you called Ian Hubert a liar. You called him an accomplice to a crime. You are not fit to clean his shoes, let alone call him a liar. You owe him an apology. Please look at me when I talk to you. Did you hear me?
I heard you.
You owe him an apology.
Longtime resident of Sciop Township. Are we expecting trustee Brizot to swoop in after public comments at all tonight to vote or anything? Supervisor Hathaway? Are you expecting trustee Brizot to swoop in tonight after comments, so he can vote for you or anything?
It's not, it's not a conversation.
No question, I have some comments I'd like to address to him. I'll wait if he shows up, I'd like to do so. Supervisor Hathaway, I do not believe you're really so evil that you intended to let your false charges against trustee Kerry continue to this point in the court system. I think you knew that Jillian did not access your email with malicious intent. I think you saw a gotcha moment that thought you could throw some havoc her way. I also believe you wish you could make all this go away without having to suffer humiliation at your mistake. That's how I truly felt when I started writing these comments last week. Compassion for you, it's unheard of. Because of the real mess you were sitting in of your own making, it couldn't help but feel compassion. That was then. That was before your correspondence was released with this week's board packet. Having read your letter to the board asking that no action to be taken to pay for trustee Kerry's legal fees because of her criminal charges, trustee Kerry's behavior drew felony charges. I hope that trustee Kerry would withdraw her request for the township to pay for her legal expenses. Those are all quotes from you. How horrible can white person to be to file charges against a board member and then try to deny her reimbursement for all the attorney fees that she incurred due to your filing a false sheriff's report? Oh, really? Isn't your intention to not just let this go until you have totally destroyed trustee Kerry's life? Just like all your efforts and ongoing dirty tricks these last four years in attempting to destroy our clerk's life? What kind of sick person are you? I'll tell you what I see from all your evil deeds. I see someone whose only redeeming quality is that you like your cat. The same cat whose life was saved by the Sciop Fire Department. That same fire department where you were the only board member that voted against having the fire protection village added to next month's ballot. What I see is a supervisor that can easily be identified as a despicable human being, that's what I see. Counting the days, Billy Hathaway, counting the days, one more question, Billy. Did you happen to sign the false police report using a large black Sharpie, asking for a friend? Can you relate?
Next.
Leanne Cano, Sherwood Forest Court. The attempt to imprison trustee Kerry for a careless IT mistake caused by this supervisor makes me feel physically ill. How could this act of political oppression be happening in Sciop Township? Hathaway's actions are cruel and dangerous beyond measure, and they've caused massive harm to Kerry and our whole community. I stumbled across an acronym that may sum it up. A psychologist coined a term to describe Trump's behavior based on her longtime research of people who use power and control to manipulate others. The term is called DARVO, and it stands, it stands for deny, attack, and reverse the order of who is the victim and who is the offender. A journalist from The Guardian described it like this. Time after time, Trump proclaims his innocence, but this is only the beginning. Next, he attacks all those who bring him to account. It's not enough for him to lash out, then he declares himself the victim and insists that whoever accused him is the real perpetrator. This pattern is textbook manipulation, and its purpose is to weaken the victim. We've seen this in our own supervisor since he took office, but this latest attack on Kerry is the most monstrous of all, and now he's defaming other upstanding community members as well, including Ian. I strongly believe there is no possible way that Hathaway arrived here filing this despicable complaint alone. DARVO requires allies, those who defend and normalize the crazy. Many of us read the motion to compel the discovery for this case, and we are deeply, deeply troubled. We wonder, why is trustee Riser a witness for the prosecution when he was never involved in the incident? Why was he the only trustee interviewed by the Sheriff's Department? His connections to the prosecution are unsettling, with your wife being in charge of authorizing the felony warrants and you being a former prosecutor, and we have concerns about possible conflicts of interest among multiple community systems. We, the community, are informed and we are outraged. It is the supervisor who is 100% at fault for Kerry's legal fees, delaying court proceedings and trying to bankrupt her will not happen on our watch. The Sciop ordinance clearly applies to her legal fees, and tonight's brutal attempts to cause her further harm must end. And a final note on DARVO, when it's called out, it begins to lose its power. But those who defend or normalize it, they're equally responsible for its consequence, and tonight, the whole community is watching to see which way every trustee will vote, and I urge you to stand against these vicious, vicious behaviors and take one small step toward restoring justice for trustee Kerry and for our entire community, because what you have done has affected every single one of us. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to get to ordinances, as I always do. Thank you, Donna, for all these years, really appreciate it. Anyway, and this gentleman over here, I don't know the whole history of the situation, but I believe in the hiring process that if people have done something in the past and have come back, having actually assisted people who've had issues in their life, I think it's important when people look themselves out of that to acknowledge that, so. But I don't have any of the details. I want to get to ordinances, and I read this ordinance for paying of the attorneys. And to me, it's pretty clear, and it would be for you, and you know that I don't particularly care for you, Mr. Supervisor. If, if you were doing something, and, and I know this dances, oh, it wasn't part of her duties. But having watched every RAC, I have to tell you, last night I got, couldn't sleep. So I'm watching the finance in 2021. You should look it up, I think it was February 10th of 2021. And your whole attitude is that way through almost every board meeting, every, every issue. I was shocked about Ian Hubert, because that guy's like the salt of the earth, in my opinion, as far as being objective. And to accuse him, and, and I also feel that a lot of residents, since you've been supervisor, are fearful to come and speak. You call the sheriff, and it's almost like threatening people. I personally have been warned about being careful. And I think that's a little bit scary. So, you know, it could happen to any one of you, and you can look back on when the Zoom first started. People had a very difficult time, you had to make a cheat sheet, there was all kinds of difficulties. So just because there's a police report that says this thing, there's a lot of different experts. And, and not that I'm personally been in a malpractice suit, but there's a lot of expert witnesses that aren't that expert too. And so I think that needs to be determined. However, I do believe the ordinance is clear that unfortunately, you have cost us a lot of money. We need to pay that. And, and I would say that for anybody here on the board, unless they, there was something, you know, really felonious. I mean, this was ridiculous, but anyway, thank you very much, thanks again, Donna.
Good evening, Renee Klubek, Sciop resident. Out of respect to this board, I won't in three minutes' time discuss my personal opinion about my tremendous support of trustee Kerry. I personally will go on record, I voted for her and hope to have a great future with her. What I will say is, I worked my career in medical surgery management. I worked with liability insurance for physicians, and it's very similar to what is being presented tonight in the ordinance. I'm familiar with that. The first meeting that my husband and I ever attended in this community after 30 years was April 9th, 2024. I was happy to hear the report on the N1 discovery, because I was familiar after seven years of working with Outlook email. I know exactly what happened that night, I'm very familiar with it, and I really appreciated what Ian brought to the more people that weren't familiar with that software. With that said, I read the ordinance. I 100% urge you to understand, you have, you have a responsibility, whether, whatever your personal opinions are, that is to be decided elsewhere, thanks to the poor judgment and poor relationship that supervisor Hathaway has brought to this community. But you have a responsibility tonight to follow the ordinance and follow the rules. I personally support it as I did in a medical malpractice. It was not about judgment on the physician, it is about what the insurance coverage is contracted to do and what you pay in order to have that done. It should follow precedent, it should be voted yes, the people involved may need to abstain, I will not comment on that. I would love to hear the opinion of the township's legal counsel on what she says this ordinance portrays. I am frustrated, I am angry, I am tired that our township is continuing to have to do this, and I will be happy to attend on November 20th. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Mark Altamari, I'm Sciop resident. I'm here to talk about L1. I think the issue of discussion really boils down to whether you vote to support the payment as per the statute, or whether you kick the can down the road and wait for the next board. The second question is. The second question is, is should trustee Carrie recuse from that vote? My answer to both those questions. One, yes, you should answer the question tonight. You shouldn't kick the can down the road. Why? This all happened on your watch, every one of you, and your watch isn't over yet. There's no reason to push this along. There's no point in delaying. Justice delayed is justice denied. So you should take care of it tonight. I think the statute is clear. I think other people have said it. From what I read, there's no debate whether it should be based on guilt or innocence. There's no timeframe. You shouldn't wait so long. The costs are being incurred. The trial goes on. It's been delayed a couple times. I think that much is clear. It should be voted on. You should follow the statute. There's nothing else you need to really consider. It hasn't changed. It's been the same. And if you don't like the statute, then that's probably something for the next board to fix it, if it's not where you want it. The second issue of recusal, based on personal interest and being a party of interest in this, I think the answer to that question is trustee Carrie should recuse herself on one condition, and that condition is that supervisor Hathaway also recuses, because I think he is also and why do I say he's a person of interest? Because he's the one that was involved in the incident. He's the one under whose purview these charges resulted, three of them, not two, three. One was was too far-fetched to be, I think, sustained. And there was, I thought a rush. I thought that something like that, which could have been a misunderstanding between colleagues, turned into felony charges, was rushed, and there was no delay. There was no desire to push that off at the time. And so I don't think there should be a delay or a desire to push that off now. In fact, I think it's curious that with or without, probably without supervisor Hathaway's knowledge or approval, somebody who supported him decided to use that incident to produce, publish, and disseminate a very fancy direct mail campaign trumpeting the fact that trustee Carrie was charged with two felonies, and that was weeks in advance of an election. That, I think, is curious, not for discussion tonight, but I think that makes supervisor Hathaway a person of interest and worthy of recusal. So it's either both recused or neither. And I don't know who gets to decide that, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Next.
South half. Hello, Caroline. Caroline Altmaire, Cyo resident. Everybody said it great in front of me, all the things I had to say. Supervisor Hathaway, I just cannot believe some of the things you wrote in that letter, in that email to clerk Flintoff. The things you said about Ian Hubert are despicable, absolutely despicable to me. And that you're dragging this on, and you're basically proclaiming her guilty, and in this country, you're presumed innocent until proven guilty. And she shouldn't have this and this and this because she committed these felonies. It's just abhorrent to me. I object to have, are tax dollars going to having to have a sheriff here? I just think that that's outrageous. And I guess the last thing I have to say, and of course, like, I don't know, did I just say dragging Ian Hubert into this? I mean, like, that was so far beyond the pale. I just can't even imagine that you would say he was covering for Carrie. It just, when I read that, I just, I yelled in my house, because that was so outrageous. The last thing I want to say is trustee Brazel has not been here for weeks. After a certain number of misses, you're supposed to be like, not on the board anymore, but is he pulling a paycheck still, but not here doing work? I just find that, talk about waste of taxpayer dollars, you know, so. Anyway, that's all I got to say. I think you really did wrong, big guy, and I think you're going to pay for it big time somehow.
Judy Plunk, resident and future trustee, and why I say future trustee is because that's really where my comments are coming from tonight, is that the ordinance that people are referring to, I also read it. It does seem quite clear. The township shall pay for, engage, or furnish the services of an attorney to advise the officer as to the action and to appear for and represent the officer or employee in the action. Now, there's no reference there to anything about compensation or suit or payment at all. The ordinance is brief and to the point. Now, my issue is, in looking at the insurance, there were two letters from the insurance company, both denying coverage. Now, I'm assuming that insurance, that this ordinance was set up with the expectation that insurance would cover and indemnify our employees and our trustees. As a future trustee, that concerns me, because I'll be sitting in one of those seats, and without the insurance, that puts it back on taxpayers. It becomes a self-insured situation. I do not believe we are meant to be in a self-insured situation. So I have issues with, not the ordinance, but the insurance. Why are we not holding the insurance company to the fire on this? Because they keep referring to a suit, a suit, but there's nothing in our ordinance that refers to there having to be a suit. So my question for the trustees is, did we expect this insurance company to cover our ordinance? And if so, then push back on the insurance company. The second is, why would we sign up with Decker again, which is on the agenda tonight, without this being addressed? Because we are renewing with the same company, Decker. He's changing the provider, but we are signing up to renew with him and not covering something that's in our ordinance, and we would expect the insurance company to cover. The taxpayer should not be on the hook for this. I, as a trustee, do not want the taxpayers on the hook for indemnification. And so I would, one, question the, not the coverage, not the coverage in the ordinance. I would really question the insurance company saying no and denying it because of all their reasons, that there was no suit. And secondly, I would really push back on renewing with Decker when this is not covered. And so I really, really questioned a renewal with the company, very company that is stranding us on this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Brand. I would like to thank Judy Monk for her thoughtful comments. I want to talk about two things on the agenda. First, I want to talk about the TIF for $18 million. It seems that an entirely new building with 42 units could be built for much, much less than $18 million. That's what we're talking about, 42 units. And also, if you look at that, most of the the justification is paying for the public benefits that this developer committed to. So then we're going to turn around and say, oh, you don't have to pay that. So anyway, that's my one issue. And then, secondly, I want to talk about paying for the attorney services for trustee Carrie. The ordinance is very clear. It's in plain language. So, Mr. Riser, this will be a test of how good an attorney you are, if you cannot interpret the plain language of that ordinance. Because I'm not sure how you're going to vote, but anyway, it's plain. It's clear. And secondly, Mr. Riser, did you act on your own in dealings with the sheriff? Since you never told the board about it. That's most unusual. You had dialogue with the sheriff. You provided some understanding email, but you never brought it to the board. You never told the board about it. That's significant. That's very, very significant. I would not be a bit surprised if there was not civil action on this entire mess. Justifiable civil action, which I believe would be very successful against a couple of people on the board. Thank you.
Evening. Hi, Laura Hindle, Cyo Township resident. My statement is, you have to vote for paying for Mr. Carrie's legal fees since Section 2-42 ordinance is law. It is as simple as that. Otherwise, you'll end up with no one willing to volunteer on committees, hold an office, or even work for the township. I'm also aware that this will be extremely costly for Cyo residents by directly by direct attorney fee payment through this ordinance and via Washtenaw County taxes paid that go to the prosecutor's office. But we have also elected all of these people. Will, you wrote that and sent that email, and it got stuck in your outbox. Same as the meeting notification. You wrote this email. Ms. Carrie didn't construct this email. She didn't hack into your account either. It wasn't breached. You left your email account open on the shared computer. There is no conspiracy theory as you have dreamed up for political reasons. Your fixed Cyo website said that Ms. Flintoff and Ms. Carrie created a conspiracy against you. This is delusional thinking. Apparently, every computer at Cyo needs to remind users to log out, just as they have at the public library. It is a sad day that you felt compelled to seek charges against your colleague. Regarding trustee Brazel not in attendance, I'm not surprised. I'm hopeful that he will just continue to not attend. He has been nothing but a puppet. I also caught him on a hot mic calling trustee Carrie a Wiccan, otherwise known as a modern pagan religion that focuses on witchcraft. You are also delusional and clearly have issues with strong females or women of this township. You owe all women of Cyo an apology, but especially Ms. Carrie.
Good evening, board. A couple of things that I've heard that I'd like to at least refer back to the board, and maybe they can be explained. The board did receive an attorney opinion from our township attorney about Mr. Brazel's absences and the options we have for remedy. So I wish us to see that. That is in the report section of the board packet. Another comment, I also agree that it's unfortunate that our insurance company is not fulfilling the terms of their insurance. Decker is actually the insurance agency. Tokyo Marine is the actual insurance company that's deciding whether to grant or deny a claim. Another thing that I've found a bit concerning on the board agenda tonight is this Brownfield proposal. One thing, and I'm certainly open to hearing more information about it, but at least as I understand the application, an affordable apartment at, I believe, 80% AMI for this area, according to the application, is $1,763 a month. For the record, another property in Cyo Township that's brand new, Woodview Commons, is renting a similar apartment for $1,850 at market rate. That's concerning. Ultimately, the last thing I'll say is, I do believe that trustee Riser, Mr. Hathaway, and trustee trustee Carrie are all conflicted on this issue and should recuse themselves, and the other officers and trustees of the board should make the decision, and they should vote to refund trustee Carrie and prove the claim for payment, as is legal under our ordinance that was codified then much, much time ago. Thanks, everybody.
Hello, my name is Ian Hubert. I just want to read point number four in supervisor Hathaway's email. Was Ian Hubert just being helpful when he deleted my Outlook email account from the shared laptop computer on 11/15/23 without permission or authorization? Or was he tampering with evidence to protect his friend, Gillian Carey, whom he found already committing a crime when he arrived in Township Hall? I can assure this board and members of the public that my actions were with the best of intentions. Given the opportunity, I would do it every single day. When I arrived at the Township Hall, I didn't find trustee Carrie committing a crime. I found trustee Carrie stressing out, trying to attempt to recover a two-factor authentication code to start the RAC Zoom meeting. She wasn't hacking your email. To be super clear, I didn't remove your Outlook account. I removed the profile, which leaves everything in place that can be discovered if needed. All you would have to do is go back to the Outlook, re-enter your credentials, and everything would be back there again. I did it, supervisor Hathaway, to protect you and nobody but you, and therefore this community. Supervisor Hathaway, I spoke to you on Wednesday, November 22. You said something along the lines of not wanting to get people in trouble and just trying to understand what happened. Boy, how you have changed your tune. I believe at the time I presented you with a reasonable explanation of what happened, and it was you, and solely you, who decided to weaponize this against trustee Carrie, now myself, and this community. And now you're bringing my name into disrepute. You seem to be hanging a lot of weight on Detective Parris's report, and in particular, page number eight, somehow indicating the entries in the Windows search database indicate that an email was read. The Windows search mechanism, how it works, doesn't actually record whether an email was read. All it does is records whether an unread email was read. Detective Parris's report has more holes in it than a century-old dartboard sitting on the walls of Buckingham Palace. Supervisor Hathaway, I suggest, if you're going to make these accusations against me, do a little bit of research. Take the time to understand the technology. And then, when you've come to a conclusion, look me in the face and make an accusation to me, to my face. Don't put it in a public record like this. How dare you? As stated in my public comments in June, I can still look myself in the mirror, hold my head up high, and know that my name is still Hubert. I feel sorry for you, and I hope you can do the same.
My name is Bonnie Garushan, twenty-four thirty East Delhi Road. Been a Scioto Township resident of thirty-one years. I'm also a licensed attorney in the state of Michigan. I'm here to support trustee Carey's request for the township to fund her legal fees in connection with criminal charges we've been discussing. I've examined the record in the matter and have found no foundation for the criminal charges. And as Ian just said, it's my belief that the forensic report does not establish that trustee Carey read Supervisor Hathaway's emails. I've also looked at the township ordinance, and it clearly requires that the township reimburse defense fees because trustee Carey was clearly engaged in township business starting the computer for the road advisory committee meeting. This board does not have any authority to judge the innocence or guilt of trustee Carey. The ordinance does not require any such judgment by the board. But Supervisor Hathaway appears to want to adjudicate this matter in this forum instead of the court. I object to this misuse of power and ask all trustees to focus only on the request to reimburse the legal fees, not adjudicate trustee Carey's guilt or innocence. We need to leave that to the court. This matter is plainly a political persecution of an innocent person by Supervisor Hathaway. If the board refuses to pay for the legal fees, it will be complicit in the political persecution. I'm asking you to vote to approve the legal fees for trustee Carey. Thank you.
I think we need a crash test dummy to be put in trustee Brezo's seat. Pam Lloyd, a Scioto resident, Scioto community newsletter, Scioto government watchdog. Definition of lawfare: the strategic use of legal proceedings to intimidate or hinder an opponent. The use of legal action to cause problems for an opponent. While one can state the supervisor did not run for supervisor in the August election, he paid for advertising website and championed trustee Carey's opponent. After reading trustee Brezo's most recent email in the current Scioto Board Packet Correspondence, I have a short list of questions no one seems to be asking. Who left their email program opened and logged in on a shared township computer that led to the charges against trustee Carey? Supervisor Hathaway. Who wrote the emails that were waiting in the, that were in the wait-to-be-sent folder? Supervisor Hathaway. Who was the most damaged by the sent emails? Supervisor Hathaway's ego. Who among the board has spoken to the Scioto legal counsel to understand Bellata's motion to compel discovery document and how will it affect Scioto Township? Clearly, after reading the email threads, trustee Brezo could have done a better job studying the issue and speaking to Scioto's counsel. Scioto Township has a long history of problems logging into shared, the shared computer to start Zoom meetings. How many board members have had frustrating experiences starting Zoom meetings? Trustee Brezo has little if any experience with Scioto's glitchy computer system to run Zoom. However, he has been quick to criticize and very vocal about trustee Carey's guilt and witchiness, as it turns out. If Treasurer Palmer, trustee Reiser, trustee Brezo, and Supervisor Hathaway were really trying to protect Scioto's interests, its finances, the residents' money, wouldn't you four have put an end to this witch hunt in the beginning? Rob Pattinson has kept track of Hathaway's semi-private attorney bills being paid by Scioto Township, and it's in the thousands of dollars. Supervisor Hathaway is on record early in the inception of the Grand Rapids attorney saying, ah, it's not going to cost the township anymore money. He lied or was obscenely ignorant. Supervisor Hathaway, the hundred thousand dollar plus cost to residents for trustee Carey's legal bills are all on your shoulders, and it is your township legacy. You made the mistake. You tried to blame it on someone else using lawfare. It also appears that you were trying to bankrupt trustee Carey for some kind of revenge. Please raise your hand if you believe that trustee Carey is innocent.
Take my bag, please.
Finish your three minutes. Each person has one turn during public.
Okay, I'll wait and do it later then.
You're lucky.
Anyone else who has not yet spoken would like to speak during public comment?
I moved that we let him finish so he didn't have to stick around till midnight.
Support.
I got a clock on you.
I stuttered a little bit too, so it might be longer. All right, this right here is to Supervisor Will Hathaway. I despise you. You are nuisance to the board and to the township. Try to get a life that uplifts people instead of seeking to revenge. Revenge on people that don't agree with you. Your countdown as supervisor is nearing the end. Hallelujah.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Let's turn to the remote participants.
Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to speak. Jonathan Greenberg. Hi, Jonathan.
Hi, folks. Lot, I don't need to rehash some excellent comments tonight. Boy, I wouldn't want to be that Will Hathaway guy. He's taken. But I do want to make a point. And this is coming from somebody who managed five different email systems for the Michigan Medicine back when it was University of Michigan Health System, right? When they first started up, I used to read email headers to figure out why things weren't going right. So I know a little bit about email, and I've been calling this a nothing burger with stupid cheese and now criminal onions and pickles for a while here. But one thing I do want to point out, and I think this will come to light down the road, is this Detective Parvis guy. Yeah, not, not a technical guy. I understand, maybe he was like the cop in the room who had the most training, so he went and took a class. But he starts with a conclusion and works a couple of data points back to the point where he said, okay, yeah, this is a trustee who broke in and was looking around and saw something called a read notice. I think Ian spoke about it earlier. And, you know, there's five different reasons why, within the Outlook server, why something can take on a read status, including just the synchronization of the Outlook server to the desktop or the laptop that he had stuck his credentials on. So, you know, from a technical standpoint, sorry if I'm a nerd, but this is really, really bad, and I understand it's complicated and it's not that easy to understand. But when things, when people start looking at Detective Parvis's work here, it's not going to go very far. This whole thing is slated to end. It will end, unfortunately. It'll end when that, our supervisor decides to end it. Or it goes to court. Man, what an extra mess we just don't need. Thanks a lot, Will.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else interested, please raise your Zoom hand. We have twenty-four people in attendance on Zoom. Sorry, David Reed. Hi, David.
Hello, David Reed, Scioto resident and, I was going to say resident, your friendly neighborhood warlock, but maybe, maybe not. Leanne, I want to thank you for giving me a new term. I think you said it was Darvo. I simply called it Trumpism, and I have accused Mr. Hathaway and the fix Scioto people of being, using, taking pages right out of Trump's book for this last election, and obviously, it is very obvious. So I'm going to go back and listen to the recording of the meeting and write down what Darvo stands for, but thank you very much, Leanne. But my, I have a very simple comment. It's a question for the supervisor, and I know he won't answer it, but I would expect him to think about it, and I would expect the board to think about it. Had John Reiser been the chair of the RAC Committee and had logged into the computer and had sent your messages, would you have accused him of a felony, one of your greatest supporters? Would you have accused him? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else interested? Yes. Oh, actually. Do I see another Zoom hand? Hey, I see none. Will?
Okay, I think I heard someone say they wanted to respond to the question about insurance.
Are you going to? Sure, I was, I can speak about it more during L1. I do just want to respond to Judy Ryan's comments. I share your concern about the township being in a position of being self-insured. That is not the design, and I do think that this board needs to look at following up. Those were initial claims made to the insurance company in May and in July, and I would encourage all of us to see what actually we can take to follow up with our insurance company. The Tokyo Marine portion of it is proposed to be the same in this renewal that's in our consent. So I would just say, I share that with you, and that's a whole nother piece of it is the different options the township might have going forward to make ourselves whole, because I agree that this shouldn't be on taxpayers.
Any other responses to public comment? Well, I have a response to public comment. I learned about my email being forwarded to Jessica Flintoff from Clerk Flintoff late on November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Jessica wrote to ask me for an explanation. She did not initially recognize that it was an old email thread from July twenty-twenty-two. The next day, November sixteenth, I received Ian Hubert's long email from which I learned that, one, Jillian Carey was in my email account the night before via the shared laptop in the meeting hall. Two, Ian recognized the situation as a very serious security breach during which someone could have caused mischief. Three, Ian had decided on his own to remove my email account from the shared computer. Jillian was another recipient of Ian's email. At no time did Jillian communicate with me regarding her being in my email account. On November sixteenth, I met with Scioto's IT Director, Chris Bailey. I learned from him that multiple Outlook email accounts were kept open on the shared laptop, including Clerk Flintoff's and Fire Department Administrator Terry Swobbs. I did not know that the shared computer had this particular security vulnerability. I later learned that the security flaw was common knowledge among those who regularly use the shared laptop to launch Zoom meetings. Chris described email trespass situations he had dealt with at previous employers. He shared with me that Jillian, Jessica, and trustee Kathy Knoll were meeting with him to discuss the incident. I also met with Township Manager Joyce Parker. I want to be clear that nobody with whom I spoke on November sixteenth advised me to report the incident to the sheriff. At the end of the day, on November sixteenth, I decided to go to the sheriff's office. I reported what had occurred and asked if this was the type of incident that the sheriff could investigate. I indicated that my goal was to have an investigation that was, one, independent of the township, to learn what had happened, and, two, to ensure that the problem did not recur. I stated that it was not my goal to have Jillian charged with a crime. The investigation by the sheriff did take place over the next few weeks. A sheriff detective specializing in computer crimes was brought in. He contacted me in December to say that he had completed his forensic investigation and that he had determined that Jillian did commit crimes and that he was recommending to the prosecutor that charges be brought against her. The detective found Jillian had read a particular email, and in a separate action, she forwarded it to Clerk Flintoff. I was surprised, but he explained the evidence, and I understood the basis for his recommendation. The sheriff report was sent to the prosecutor. I heard nothing more until June, when I learned that the prosecutor was planning to bring charges against Jillian. It was the prosecutor that made that decision, not me. Again, I was surprised. However, it was the prosecutor's decision based on the sheriff's investigation. The question before us this evening is whether Jillian Carey's actions on November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three can reasonably be viewed as part of her job as trustee and chair of the Roads Advisory Committee. If we agree that she acted in accordance with her duties to the township, then, according to our ordinance, the board must pay for her legal fees. I realize that there is strong disagreement between board members on this question. However, there is no question that she has not been exonerated by the legal system. The amount of money is significant. There is no explanation offered for how Jillian will use the sixteen thousand plus that she has already raised to pay her legal fees. The board is asked to authorize payment of her total legal costs with taxpayer dollars from the general fund. That cost is already more than ninety-two thousand dollars through the end of September for lawyers who are billing at a rate of around seven hundred dollars per hour. When we get to this item on the agenda, we will first deal with the question of whom should abstain. Obviously, a member of the Board of Trustees who will derive a direct financial benefit must abstain. Other reasons for abstention may be considered. The procedure under our rules of order is for each trustee seeking to recuse him or herself to state their reasons for abstaining. The other members of the board will then vote on whether they support the abstention. If a majority vote in support, if a majority votes in support of the abstention, then the norm is for those who abstain to physically leave the meeting for the duration of the deliberation on the item from which they are recusing themselves. However, we do not have a rule requiring that abstaining members abstain themselves.
Is that it?
That's it.
May I make just one comment to clarify something?
Sure.
I, I just want to clarify that the question of reasonable basis is if the employee or officer had a reasonable basis for believing he was acting within the scope of his authority, which I think is slightly different than what you stated, and I think everyone is clear on that. I just wanted to ensure.
Thank you, Maron.
And I would just make a comment that I am not planning to make any comments on the ongoing, open criminal case that's happening and hope that we can focus on the question before us tonight.
All right, if we're ready to move on, we have approval of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the regular meeting of October eighth.
Can I interrupt? Will, will you be giving a copy of that letter to the clerk for the minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you, Kathy.
So, minutes, October eighth. We have draft minutes. Are there any comments on the draft minutes? If not, is someone prepared to move approval of those draft minutes as proposed?
I would move their approval.
Moved by Reiser?
Support.
Support by Flintoff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. Those minutes are approved.
And I apologize, these were later arriving, especially typically on the night.
So the next set of minutes is for the special meeting of October ninth. And I have a couple of corrections. I don't know who these.
Okay.
Not that big a deal, but also present, the list includes board-elect members, Brandon Monk, treasurer-elect, P. Abel. And I think technically, they're not elect until after November.
And that's, you're absolutely right, and I struggled to find. And that's, you're absolutely right, and I um struggled to find a better term, so I will just um strike their um titles. I just wanted to indicate why they were um selected. It seemed that, you know, sole remaining candidate was not quite honorific enough.
The nominees, the Democratic nominees, that would be a way of referring to them.
Or primary winner.
Yeah, the the sole, how about the sole, the sole primary winner? Sole primary winner?
Whatever you you choose, I just, I think technically board elect, and I confess that I have used that term myself. But I think it is inaccurate, and I was just thinking for the minutes, we want to be accurate. Um, and then Mark Perry, I don't know if it's important, but he was not present. He was participating remotely. I believe.
Or commented, commented remotely.
That's true, yeah, so I'll I'll strike him because we we, you're right, Will, we don't include people um participating.
Right. Are there any other corrections to the special meeting of October ninth? Seeing none, is someone prepared to move those minutes as amendment? I would move, moved by Reiser, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, um, that brings us to the consent agenda. Um, we've removed H seven to new business, but other than that, um is someone prepared to move the consent agenda?
I would move the agenda, consent agenda.
Moved by Reiser, support by Noel, um please call her.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Carey?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted.
Okay, that brings us to new business. Um, the first item of new business is H seven. Uh, this is the conditional offer of employment to Michael Simpson for the position of firefighter. And Annie.
Good evening, board. Uh, I think I everything I I wanted to articulate to the board, I did so earlier. Um, with that, I'd I'd ask for any questions the board may have, or if Christopher Simpson had any more knowledge. Uh, I mean, I'm an open book. If there's any questions or concerns um that I can help with that at all, if they're willing to.
Shall we go around? Um, so people, we have, we understand questions? Comments, I guess. Um, who would like to start?
I'd be happy to.
All right, Clerk Flintoff.
Um, I mean, I'm, you know, one of the people um recommending this. I had the opportunity um to meet um Michael, and and first what I want to talk about um is one, I was really struck by his um compassion, humility, um discipline. I think you had me at, I wake up at four a.m., meditate and work out, um, something I might do in another life. Um, but but truly, um, all the training and education and desire to have a career here at SIO. Um, and so um just really appreciate that. But what I I really want to talk about is not this particular um recommendation, but just about our process, that I uh really value and trust the recommendation of our fire chief. I value and I trust the recommendation of our HR generalist. And I'll tell you that the process we have in place for recruiting, evaluating, and hiring our firefighters has never been more thorough, more fair, and more inclusive than it is today. So I'm very, very proud of our process, and I know that this recommendation comes from following that process. Um, I also want to talk a little bit that it is also consistent with um past practice of SIO Township with best practices of all employers. We want to get the very best candidates that there are. We have always considered um people um based on their qual- qualifications and talents, and that's why this offer is a conditional offer. And then they go through the background check process, which is evaluated um by our human resources, coming back sometimes with final employment, sometimes not. I'll just share a little bit. I spent um seven years working in the criminal justice system with people who have been through prison and jail. I want to remind people, one in three U.S. adults has an arrest or conviction record. Everybody from the entire political spectrum, the Cook Brothers, um from the right and the left, all recognize that businesses, governments, people don't compete for the best talent unless we have our arms open wide to make sure that we're considering people based on their talents and not based on the worst day, the worst thing that ever happened to them. We are, SIO community has has compassion, um believes in redemption, and I don't want to miss out um on talent. I know the research bears out that people who are given second chances, a fair chance, are some of the very best employees. And I know that the details of this will be evaluated by our HR generalist and fire chief and that um we'll be evaluating this. I just think that I don't want to miss out on talent because um SIO is not in step with the way other employers evaluate talent.
Like to speak next?
You can go now.
Well, we can go in order if you want.
I will. I agree with what Jessica just said. She says it very well. I'm just going to make a motherly practical comment thought. I have raised six kids, and in the teen years, you were still in there a little bit. And probably most of us have done something stupid. It's called growing pains. Some of us really had to grow up hard. The the penalty has been paid. It was a long time ago. And I want our process to be done. We have a good one, as Jessica said, and I agree. We've been through a lot of those. So I am at this point supporting moving on. That's all I'm gonna say.
Just in all.
I too am supportive of moving on. Um, I agree with what Jessica said and Donna.
You only have one.
I think that we need to embark on new hires in a fair way, and it sounds like we are. I trust Aurora and Chief Hood. They make good decisions in the first, I am a bad idea, but I will. And I look forward to supporting you and continuing the process.
First, Carrie. Yes.
Hi, Jillian Carey. Um, we have not met. I know that you've met with a couple of board members, and I don't know you. I do know about your past, some of it, from what I've heard. But the past is the past. I understand that. And I don't have an issue with any of that. I understand about redemption. What I do have a problem with is not you. Want to make it clear. So this item was under consent agenda. Sorry, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna look at Chief.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
And create the agendas. So Chief, um, you put this under the consent agenda with just an application that was very sparse. There's in here, it talks about resume. I highlighted, I sent an email to you and um HR generalist on Northrop with my concerns. And I do not see um a consistent and fair process. The reason why is, now, let me back up a bit. We've had a fire department that was ignored for decades, and we are building that up, and it is far better than what it has been. Uh, I guess in the past five years is when it really started. We, and we're growing. We have a lot more to grow. We had a worse process in the past. Going back to February of twenty twenty three, when we first hired our new um fire chief, assistant fire chief, and we've hired a lot of people in this past couple of years. Every single one of them has been under the new business except for IT, Chris Bailey. He was under consent agenda as well. However, Chris Bailey had a resume included in it, in his um in the agenda item. All of the rest of our hires have been under new business, as I said. They've all had resumes and job descriptions. I do not find that with the three firefighters in June, there was no application, no resume, just a paragraph on a little bit about each one of them. I understand this is a conditional offer, but we don't know once we get past this point other than the one that went to Lansing, I think it was Lansing, and that's all, but the rest of them are just hired. We don't know about the process. We don't know about what's happening from the time the conditional offer until they're just, we're just assuming that, I mean, I'm assuming that once the conditional offer is accepted, they've got the job. My daughter lives in Lexington, Kentucky. She just went through the process to become a firefighter, hundred and eighty applicants. She was in the top ninety-five percent. She got to the end. She still didn't get the job. She wasn't, she wasn't the best of the best. She's, she's best, but not the best of the best. She had to background check, polygraph check, polygraph test, physical exam, and and I don't mean like a physical from a doctor, running upstairs with a fifty-pound bat, um pack on her back. She did it twice. She beat her own record. Written, oral, all of that. That's before they offer a job, not after. So this is where I'd have the problem, and then we have this applicant is under consent agenda with very little information. We are a board. Every board member needs to be provided information so we can make a reasonable and educated decision because we, and I do have compassion for you and everybody else. You can ask anybody that I have helped in the township. But we have a whole township that we need to be accountable to, not based on emotion, but based on our logic. Emotion is part of it. I know we can't totally separate, but there is a lot more to it than just, here, let's slip this in. At least that's how it felt to me. So that's where, that's why I pulled this. I really feel that this needs to have, uh, we need to have more information, and I think that it would be best if Michael met with each one of us so we could get to know him. That's why I pulled it from consent. Thank you, Michael.
It seemed like there were some specific things there. Do you want an opportunity to respond either?
I would, uh, either now or at the end, whatever the board's preferences. I do have a few notes from a trustee carries company.
All right, trustee Reiser.
The drunk driver who kills someone is just as guilty as the drunk driver who drives home and doesn't hit anybody or get caught. It's just bad luck. That's not a crime that most people intend to commit. They commit it. And uh, the thing for me is, have you learned from it? Have you put it behind you? Have you made recompense with the victim financially or in that regard, as as part of the, your sentence? And have you, have you done your time, so to speak? I'm a prosecutor and have prosecuted drunk driving cases, including those causing death, but I'm also on the board of Home of New Vision, uh, which is a drug and alcohol, you know, substance abuse disorder organization. Uh, so I I've seen it from both sides. I've also helped with uh fairs regarding uh expungement fairs regarding the Michigan Legislature's recent legislation regarding clean slate and allowing drunk drivings of lower, lower levels to be expunged and including pretty serious felonies. So, so for me, it's trusting the people who are Clerk Flintoff, Supervisor Hathaway, Chief Hood, and HR Director uh Northrop to have vetted you, to have gleaned things from your past and are making this. I have four people uh that I, whose opinions I trust for value, uh recommending that we hire you, and I'm gonna support support the motion to approve you as a SIO Township's next firefighter.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I'd just like to add, um, because other people have said, maybe more eloquently than I could, um, that um, we did meet, um, some, some of us met with uh Michael, and we had the opportunity to review more material. And um I apologize for not putting more material in, uh, trustee Carey, um, we could have done that. Um, but um I I think um SIO Township is lucky to have um Michael Simpson as a candidate for this position. Um, I think in some ways, um, maybe because we're, you know, extending open arms to you, we're getting a firefighter that we might not otherwise have had the opportunity to hire. Um, and so I hope that everyone will uh support this conditional offer. Uh, that does sort of open up another round of of vetting. Um, and so it's, it's not, the process isn't complete. It's basically just moving on to the next step. But I I have confidence that Michael will come through that vetting and that he'll be an outstanding firefighter for SIO Township. So um Chief, if you'd like to respond to any of the specific question?
Absolutely. Trustee Carey, my apologies um uh for the, for the placement in the packet and and lack of materials. Um, I'm still trying to figure that part out with uh HR, what that portion of our process is. Uh, that was my fault for putting that there, not including enough information. Um, part of the reason I only included the uh job application, uh, previous candidate, I'd included his entire packet, and I had several trustees reach out to me and say, eighty-one pages is too much. Can you pare that down?
Eighty of those pages were cert- certifications.
Correct, yeah. So my apologies. Um, I I'd like to work with uh HR to make sure we have the right information for the board to make the right decisions. Absolutely.
And then we'll change our minds again. That's for sure.
This is your, well within your purview to do. Um, you did mention um uh hiring requirements uh in specific to your, your daughter, family member. Uh, in a bigger fire department, all that is done internally within the department. Uh, we use uh Emco, uh, their, their free service to us. A candidate pays fifty dollars to take an entry-level examination, uh, which we then get a copy of the score, so so all of our candidates do go through our written exam. Uh, once we uh vet their certifications and and uh all the stuff we require, which also includes the physical agility certification, uh, we we recognize outside contractors that do that, uh, so we don't do that internally ourselves either. Uh, all of our candidates do have a valid, valid physical agility uh testing certifications. That's uh several activities, including the up and down the stairs that you described. Uh, and then we do an internal oral uh board uh process, so the the process is similar. Uh, a larger department would do most of that themselves. We uh use outside uh resources for most of that ourselves. So I hope that helps answer uh your questions as to process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say one more thing, Will.
Sure.
I just want to um just acknowledge you, Michael, for being so um brave and forthright and humble in this very public process, so thank you.
I'm nervous. I don't know if you can tell or not, but.
Yes, but but just truly, um, thank you. And I um would say, you know, in a, hoping that this um motion goes through to offer you the conditional offer, you know, provided that background check process is very, very rigorous. But provided you may get through that, I would also just offer, you know, my support to know you as um firefighter Simpson and not, you know, known by, you know, the worst thing. Um, and I would ask for the entire Township Board, staff, the union, the community to, you know, when we welcome people in as employees, to welcome them in their positions and and move forward as one team. So, thank you.
You, I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Was someone prepared to make the model motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Michael Simpson pending the acceptable results for background investigation, psychological exam, pre-employment, physical drug screening with a start date in January twenty twenty-five upon successful completion of the pre-employment conditions?
I can, okay.
Oh, right, moved by Noel, support by Palmer. Um, and um, should we have a vote, all vote on this?
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carey?
No.
No.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you so much, Michael, congratulations.
And when you come to the board meeting in your unit, I probably won't be on the board, but I'd like to know about it so I can come.
Yes, and congratulations on your retirement as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, that brings us. Okay, that brings us to L one. This is the claim for payment for attorney services pursuant to Syo Township Code two dash four-two. And, um, Clerk Flintoff, I believe you were going to start us off by making the model motion?
Um, sure, yeah, I, uh, prepared this item. Um, I received a legitimate claim for payment, and so I'm bringing it to the board, and I prepared a proposed resolution. Um, I would be happy to offer it. It is included here, resolution to approve the claim for payment for attorney fees.
Do you wanna read through the resolution?
If, sure, I'll read through it. Whereas trustee Kerry has submitted a claim for payment to Syo Township for reimbursement of her attorney fees pursuant to Syo Township Code of Ordinances two-four-two incurred in case twenty twenty-four, twenty-four F three, zero eight two eight F Y, State of Michigan v Kerry, and whereas M C L six-nine-one-point-one-four-zero-eight authorizes section two forty-two of the Syo Township Code of Ordinances, which states, quote, whenever a criminal action is commenced against a past or present officer or past or present employee of the township based upon the conduct of the officer or employee in the course of employment. If the employee or officer had a reasonable basis for believing he was acting within the scope of his authority at the time of the alleged conduct, the township shall pay for, engage, or furnish the services of an attorney to advise the officer or employee as to the action and to appear for and represent the officer or employee in the action. And whereas trustee Jillian Kerry is an elected officer of Syo Township, having been elected on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, and taking office on November twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and also serves as the Chair of the Syo Township Road Advisory Committee. And whereas trustee Kerry has been charged with a crime which allegedly occurred during the scope of her duties as a township trustee and member of the RAC, the alleged conduct occurring at Township Hall immediately before a township meeting, carrying out unauthorized responsibility to enable remote meeting access on township equipment following township procedures. And whereas the township has furnished, engaged, or paid for the services of attorneys when prior claims and actions have been brought against township officials. And whereas to date, the township has not furnished or engaged the services of an attorney for this action, obligating the township to pay for the attorney services. And whereas trustee Kerry has incurred legal fees as a result of the charges arising from the allegations and has requested reimbursement of past expenses and payment of future expenses. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Syo Township Board of Trustees finds that the charges filed against trustee Kerry by the Wasinal County Prosecutor arose from her actions as township trustee and member of the RAC. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees finds that trustee Kerry had a reasonable basis for believing that she was acting within the scope of her authority at the time of the alleged conduct. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees determines to pay attorney fees for the representation of trustee Kerry in defending the charges. And be it finally resolved that the Board of Trustees approves payment of ninety-one thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-five and seventy-five cents of such attorney fees incurred through September thirtieth, as detailed in the October second invoice submitted by trustee Kerry, and that any future approval or other action shall be made by resolution of the Board of Trustees.
Support?
So, um, the motion is moved by Flintoff, support by Riser. Now, are there any abstentions that people would like to?
And if I, if I could, um, I'd copy and paste it in full rule ten point one obligation to vote if people wanna review it here.
I don't mind caught going first, um, uh, about regarding that. So, um, I'm fully prepared to vote on this, but the threshold question for me and maybe others at this board are, are whether I have a real or perceived conflict. Well, um, I don't have any financial gain out of this, one way. I don't harbor, and I genuinely mean this, any animus towards Jillian or any allegiance towards Will Hathaway on this. This, this is, this is just a decision about whether or not, uh, he should indemnify her for what she was doing while um, sitting at the table that I've sat at myself for L V C and P P P and had a hell of a time getting those meetings up and running. Um, listen, there are things that have been said in emails, at, at public comment, there are things that have been said in motion, in motions and pleadings that I don't think are accurate, but that's not what this is about. This is about whether I have a real or perceived conflict, and if this board thinks I do, I'll recuse myself. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm fully prepared to, to address some of the, the inaccuracies at, at the appropriate time, whether that's tonight or, or down the pike. But, uh, um, I guess I would rely on you folks, if, if you think I have a, 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 a real conflict. Uh, and I can talk about what my role was. If you need that to, to discern whether I do, I'm willing to do that. I will say that it was on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three at four seventeen P M, when I got a call from Deputy Alex Phillips wanting to get a copy of an email that had been sent. And I thought, why in the hell is he calling me? Cause that email went to Jessica, it went to Mark, it went to Kathleen, it went to other people. Of all the, you know, uh, gin joints, he has to end up at Casablanca or call John Riser, maybe because he remembered me from my job at the prosecutor office. Maybe it was just luck of the draw. So at ten fifteen P M on December twenty, uh, twentieth, twenty-three, I forwarded him that email and I C C'd, uh, uh, then township manager Joyce Parker, letting her know what I had done. The next day, uh, uh, in the morning at December twenty-first, uh, I, I let through an email, uh, trustees Noel and Brazono that he had contacted me and I had sent him the email because it's my understanding that Supervisor Hathaway had given him all the names of the people who got that, that email. So, so that was my involvement. I didn't talk to him about the substance, the merits, the lack of merits, the allegations. He wanted an email and I forwarded him that email. I know Kevin Parvas and have had cases with him in the past, but Parvas never called me about this and I never talked to Parvas. So to say I was, I went to the police is inaccurate. I took a damn call that I wish, uh, it wouldn't have been me, but it was me. And, and, and so, uh, that's just how, you know, how that is, um.
John, could I?
Yeah.
Could I ask a clarifying question? So if, if you have any real or perceived conflict of interest, you would, you would state what that conflict is?
I know, but I.
That request.
And, and, and I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to flesh that out.
Yeah, okay.
Cause it's not up to me whether I have. It's up to you folks to vote on whether I do.
But isn't it up to you to state?
And, and, and I, and I guess I'm looking for a little guidance.
Yeah.
I don't think.
And John, I wasn't trying to, I, I'll give you more time, cause I know it's.
I, no, so, so I guess, so I don't think that I do, but if you folks think that I do, I'm willing to, uh, and I'm willing to, 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 to recuse myself, I really am.
So what, 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 what is your real or perceived conflict if you believe you have one?
I, I don't think that I do, but if someone suggests that I do, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to that claim.
Trustee Kerry?
Yes, actually. Trustee Riser?
Good.
Were interviewed by the investigator. Making you a witness to the case.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, that is a perceived.
Yeah, but I am no more a witness.
Not finished.
Okay.
Number two.
Uh, well, can I answer number one before you go to number two, please?
Stop interrupting.
Well, if I'm being asked questions, I would like to answer them.
I didn't ask a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you were Facebook friends with the lead prosecutor, assigned to handle the matter and presumably actual friends. Your wife is a colleague of the lead prosecutor and both are divisions, division supervisors within the office, and she too presumably is friends with the prosecutor.
And you, okay.
You were also part of the fixile group. You received donations from trustee, or, um, I'm sorry, Supervisor Hathaway. You attended the meeting greet that was supported and funded by the fixile group. December first, you sent an email to the township attorneys regarding the August fourth to the ninth, twenty twenty-three email thread.
Can I please?
No, I'm not finished. There was no reason for you to do that on December first, fourteen days after the incident. Number six, there's evidence that you have stated that Will Hathaway is the victim in this issue. That's a conflict.
Okay, I thank you for your statement. It, um, I would like to address those as you brought them up, or it, it can stand as a statement and this board can, um, think that I have a conflict and I'll recuse myself.
And, and John, I, and I'm just trying to move us along here.
Okay.
This is, and I appreciate, you know, you're, you're wrestling with this, but, but it, it's really that if you believe you have a real or perceived conflict of interest on the question, that you would state it and then you would request permission to abstain.
And I don't believe that I have a conflict, but if someone on this board thinks that John Riser should recuse himself, then I'll recuse myself just to to address that concern.
You know, and I don't, I don't wanna get into all the.
To me, it's whether or not we should vote to indemnify rather than getting to the merits of the matter. I think we should vote to indemnify, but if, if I have a conflict on, on that, then so be it.
Yeah, I, I can't answer it.
Okay.
John.
All right.
I think, I think.
I don't know what to say.
If I understand correctly.
And I would also maybe.
Brian, maybe you can, can help us sort this out, but I think the procedure is that the board member who is under consideration for abstention has to state what their reason is for abstaining.
Yes.
It has to sort of come from them. It can't be sort of, um, uh, coming from somebody else on the board, really.
Yes, the, the conflict or the perceived conflict rests with the person who thinks they have it.
Right.
Then the rest of the board, or the board, I guess, including that person, votes, um, whether they are permitted to abstain.
And I, that person requests permission to abstain and then the board votes.
Right. And I would just say too, John, part of, part of why I, I mean, I'm happy to have this conversation with you, except that I've said, like, I'm not gonna talk about, you know, the, the what happened.
Right.
And all of these facts, you know, that I know of that are in the public domain, you know, I'm not going to talk about those. So I, I think that, um, I, I don't know what to say other than, you know, just, you know, just follow your moral compass.
Generally, what we're talking about is, is there a financial gain or is there a personal gain?
Mm-hmm.
Those, those are sort of the basis for, uh, for a conflict. Personal gain would be if you were voting on a contract and it's your brother or your, or your cousin or your child who is the contractor. So it's, it's not, um, it's maybe not as broad as people would like it to be.
And I think the real and perceived, I agree, Mariah, I think the real and perceived, the perceived part is where I think there's for some people in some instances, more broadness.
Yeah, and, and I think that, um, trustee Riser is correct. What we're talking about is this indemnification question. We're not talking about the case itself.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not talking about if, if he may have some involvement in the case. It, it's, it's the question of the, yeah, or not, right?
Yeah, I see it, the conflict as it relates to indemnification.
Yeah, that is the resolution on the table.
And I don't believe that I have that conflict and I am not therefore offering to recuse myself pursuant to rule ten point two.
Well, I think that sort of settles it. If you're not asking to abstain, then there's nothing for us to act on, correct?
You wanna just go around the table? I, I, um, I don't believe I have any real or perceived conflict of interest on this question.
I have no perceived or real conflict. Don't have any financial benefit from voting on this matter.
So, Will, one thing I would suggest you consider, and I think is, is as the alleged victim complaining witness, you know, I, 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 and you, you've also stated, and I believe conflated, um, you know, saying that the board would have to have a trial on this question of indemnification. That I, I would also on the financial front just suggest, you know, there is potential for victim restitution too. And so I do wanna put that on the table.
I think that's already been ruled out by the insurance company.
No, 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 Will, victim restitution. So when someone is convicted of a crime, um, and then as part of sentencing, sometimes there is restitution to the victim.
Yeah, there's no damages, that's, that.
Oh, there's no damages?
No, no, there's no damages. That's why the insurance company, if I understand correctly, that's why they ruled out getting involved.
That, that's part of why they.
Part of it.
Well, could I follow up a little bit on what she said? Um, in the sheriff's report, you're identified as the alleged victim. That means that you are claiming that something happened to you, that some harm occurred to you. And in theory, one might think that that's why you opted to go forward and file the police report.
In theory.
So I wanna be sure you understand that you're referred to as the victim.
Yeah.
And that carries a certain meaning and definition. And you alone went to the sheriff's department and chose to file a police report.
Are you sure you wanna go down the path of talking about going to the sheriff to file reports?
I want to get all of the facts out here because there are people here who think you have.
But the.
And I, I'm not done, I'm not done.
All right, Candy, go on.
None of us went to the county sheriff and filed a police report about this situation. You did. And that shows you have some possible entanglement with your emotions and what happened here. If you were a victim, you're saying you were a victim. It raises questions. So it raises questions of potential conflict. I know it's funny, Will.
Well, you're just saying the same thing over and over again.
I think you need to hear it over and over again.
And keep going then.
I do that with you because it doesn't seem to sink in because you don't listen to other people.
Wow. Wow.
Okay.
You're so persuasive, Kathy.
Yeah, um, so the situation makes, it makes no sense that you don't have a conflict. And I see that you do have a conflict. It's my opinion. And I see that you do have a conflict. It's my opinion that you have a conflict. I mean, if indeed, as you say, you have so much neutrality, then why on earth did you file a police report before talking to our IT director or even Ian who tried to help you? You didn't, you just dismissed their input and you went off and did your own thing. Totally counterproductive.
Let me know when you're done.
I'm done for now. I don't know. I thought we were voting on whether to pay money now or later. And it's.
We are, but who can vote? Who should, who should vote?
Yeah.
And that's.
And they're trying to persuade me that I have a conflict of interest. I've already declared that I don't.
Conversation, but it's.
Yeah.
So.
And I, you know, I.
I'm not commenting on that.
I I I mean, my opinion is that trustee Carey, Supervisor Hathaway certainly have a conflict of interest. I think that you may have a perceived conflict of interest. You know, I don't want to get into all of all of what happened, but if you want to know, I I believe you have a perceived conflict of interest. And real or perceived, real or perceived, real or perceived.
And I agree. You don't because you were the recipient of the email that was forwarded from.
That I I I received an email from Will Hathaway and Fran received a calendar invitation from Will Hathaway. Everything else is alleged.
I would, I would say that. I'm sorry that it's very hard for me to hear what's happening up here with all of the side talking. If I'm being moved by asking you to be more quiet, I apologize. I would say that if. Yeah, you know, Mariah, I think it's just your body position and the acoustics, yeah. I would say that if if you don't, if you're not going to convince Supervisor Hathaway that he has a real or perceived conflict, you don't have to have a vote tonight. You can table the question. He's not going to be on the board forever. We've that that is one option that you have. I think that he is correct, that he doesn't have to accept your interpretation of whether or not he has a conflict. And I feel like we could be here for a really long time if you continue to try to convince him that he has a conflict.
Yeah. So. Okay, well, I have a perceived and a real conflict. Because I am the named defendant requesting payment of my outstanding legal fees. I re- request of the board permission to recuse myself from this vote.
To approve the request by trustee Carey to abstain for reasons she stated on the record. I'll support.
Moved by Flintoff, support by Noel.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Under discussion. If we can have a little more discussion. Will, consider moving to recuse yourself as well for a couple of reasons. I think it's gonna pass. I think it's gonna be three to two or three to to one. And if it doesn't pass on October twenty second, it's gonna pass in November. I I I think you're the person who went to the police. You're the one who's gonna be the main witness in the case that we're paying to indemnifying. I I I I think I'm a borderline, but I don't think I have perceived. But I I think you have a genuine conflict and I implore, plead, beg you to ask to recuse yourself and have this vote tonight or 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 not. That that's all I can ask.
This point is is, this just needs to be discussion on this one motion. There certainly could be subsequent motions, John, but this this is the motion to approve the request by trustee Carey to abstain for the reasons that she stated on the record. Certainly after we go through this roll call, the supervisor, you others could make additional motions.
Alright, so let's go through the roll call for the question trustee Carey's abstention.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six zero.
Well, I am interested in your point, John. I think actually that is much more persuasive to me. So I will, I will.
Would you please state, Will, would you please, any member who has a real or perceived conflict of interest on the question, please state what the conflict is and request permission to abstain from the vote.
I think there is a perceived conflict in the fact that I am the person who reported this to the sheriff.
I make a motion to approve Supervisor Hathaway's request to abstain for the reasons that he stated on the record.
Support by Reiser?
Oh, there needs to be any discussion. Why don't you just call the roll?
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carey?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Are there any other members who would like to state their conflict, real or perceived, and request permission to abstain?
Hearing none, I would suggest that we call the roll and the question.
After all this, can your question be read?
Well, it's the resolution.
Oh, it's a long one, Donna.
Yeah.
You approved the resolution that was read at the beginning.
Yeah, I do, I do want to just say, discuss briefly a couple of points in in the resolution. And this this language, one, I just want to state the second whereas clause repeats the code of ordinances. And that the coverage is past or present officer, past or present employee. I just want to emphasize what a chilling effect this situation can have on employees. Current, future, other officers. I want to acknowledge that. I know the employees have been holding this. I'm worried something like this could happen to them. And so I think that's one reason why it's in in another ancillary reason why this is important. The second to last whereas on the first play page uses the language of furnish, engage, or pay. I want to say typically, we prefer to, you know, furnish services through our township attorney. In this case, there was a conflict of interest as the victim is also another township official. Sometimes we engage it usually through our insurance company where our insurer picks an attorney. You know, such as, you know, they'll select Foster Swift or John Shay for defense. I also want to comment that I am very committed to pursuing all options with our insurance company in order to make the township whole. And as this proceeds, any other responsible party, I'm committed to pursuing all reasonable options to get the township made whole. And I would just note regrettably that though we take action tonight, this will be an ongoing issue for the future board as well. So I was glad to hear on the opinions of Judy Monk, Ryan Yeakbull, and Kathleen Brandt on this because sadly, this issue is not going to be resolved soon, it seems. Did you have any other lines?
No, I think you've covered it pretty well. We, we have a responsibility to follow the indemnification provision. The language is clear and I will be supporting this. Gillian had a reasonable basis for believing she was acting within the scope of her authority. She followed established township protocols in conducting her duties. So I totally support this.
And I have, you say MCL six nine, which I printed out when the packet came out, fourteen oh eight. You say M six, MCL six ninety one dot fourteen oh eight authorizes our ordinance as if that's enabling the our legislation. I think six ninety one fourteen oh eight gives additional support, you know, without regard to our ordinance, that in other words, her basis for this claim would be based not only on our code of ordinance, but on a state law, which trumps. So so I I, you know, you know, MCL six nine one dot four oh eight authorizes and section two four two, I I think it's stronger than what you say say there. So I I think it's an independent and additional basis for indemnification of someone who thinks acting in the scope. So that's, that's my point and you might want to butt buttress that or take a friendly amendment to 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 say that that's that's an additional basis, you know, and and, you know, and.
Maybe provides the basis for and authorizes.
Yeah, I mean, the slight difference is that the the statute is permissive.
Right, but it but it does authorize it.
It, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's covered, but I I appreciate pointing that out, yeah.
So you think it's sufficiently covered with the.
I do think it's sufficiently covered. It is, it is a good point, though. This isn't, this indemnification ordinance is not something that was just pulled out of thin air. It's certainly based on, it's almost, it's almost identical to the statute.
Basics on which to rely.
I know, I know, and we we don't pass ordinances that don't have a basis in state law. Yeah.
No, but even if we didn't have the ordinance, state law.
Right, yeah.
And regarding this matter, we have a figure before us tonight. Is this the final figure?
This is the invoices through September thirtieth. And and Donna, in terms of controlling costs, you know, that this, you know, we have to deal with this. Again, sometimes we furnish services through our township attorney. Sometimes it's covered by insurance. Each of those options are far preferable to the township. And if, you know, until either one of those is possible, then we're left with the obligation to pay. But I am fully committed to trying to responsibly recoup the cost of the township from the insurance company or any other responsible parties.
We don't have any choice.
We don't have a choice.
Okay, so we've got a resolution by Flintoff, support by Reiser. Want to call the roll?
I don't know, but I can speak.
I I think you can call the, I, I'll call the roll.
Please call the roll.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Alright, I'll call the roll. Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. The motion, the resolution is adopted for to zero.
All right, we can move on now to reports. We have some written reports that have been submitted. Item I two off of the agenda. I believe we can move on now to our update from government governmental consultant services.
Um, Will, if we could, I just wanted to get trustee a chance to give a, I know she had a couple of updates.
No, no.
On I one briefly.
But we also have a five minute break. We've been sitting here since for two hours now.
You could make a motion for a certain reset, but we need to do that by motion if you want to do that.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Carey for a five minute recess. Five minute recess. Support by Noel, all those in favor say aye, aye. So recess for five minutes.
Everyone, please make it just five, return by nine ten.
That was, that was, that was. It's one of the things. Okay, you guys have a good night.
We just need, I work two copies every year, then we can just keep shaving all our tax revenue back. I I, the problem is we don't have enough land.
Problem that you're actually requesting to see the rural to south side. That area probably is prime for redevelopment. There was a development that wanted to be developed, wanting to develop, and she said, Lord. I know, but I mean.
I know, but I mean.
But.
I can get a progress early.
Oh, they said they fixed that.
I was just wondering. I had it up and then I switched.
By the way, I, I have. I went through a red line like five.
They're not sending down.
I'm gonna tell you, I've been trying to get the speed.
I'll ask tonight.
I know, but you're touching me. Doctors don't listen. You've got a short amount of time. That makes sense. You're totally fine.
Nobody has enough. I know there's.
It's like the loot free, but as long as you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, except all of it.
No, I was thinking about it. I thought.
No, no, the, the cuisines are very good.
But I mean, but we have.
While the table, that table.
The public is a lot closer.
All right.
Right, let's, let's come back to order.
Wanna call the order?
Yes, but we're calling the meeting back to order, if we, if we may. We, if you have conversations, if you, uh, that you need to continue, please take them out in the hallway. All right, Kristy, you're up.
Okay, so just a couple of things, um, from last week. Two things, three. We did a visit to the barn on, uh, Wednesday. There were a group of us that went out. Uh, Chris Chang, Brandon, Becky, Kathleen, Judy. And we were able to get in the barn and the holes didn't appear to be as big as what we thought. They were really like this big, just a couple of them. And it looked pretty. The shingles were buckling, but, um, I think Chris Chang is gonna look into the preservation of it. And then Mariah was gonna look into other options for the board can consider. So that, we were gonna try to bring it tonight, but it was, too much was going on already with the agenda, so we decided not to.
Okay.
Gonna come on to a next meeting.
Great.
And then we also had the, um, regular manager meeting. And they, uh, discussed, um. They appointed the chair and the secretary. The chair, I believe, is Kathleen and the secretary is Judy Monk. And they are looking at job descriptions and they're gonna have their next meeting on the fifteenth of November. Along with the ad hoc before that and the manager after that. So the two meetings on the same day. And then lastly, Brandon gave a nice update on the water leak on Cranberry Court Water Main Break. This was a, a water leak that they pretty much stumbled on while they were out there waiting for E T McKenzie to come out. And Ray Hawkins, one of our new, uh, utility techs saw it. And it turns out it's been there for close to, they think twenty years.
Wow.
The resident said it's been going on since she's been there. And Brandon feels it is possibly from something the developer did not complete at the time. There's no way to go backwards and get any, you know, recourse financially from the developer. We're looking into filing a claim with the insurance company to see what we can do on that end. Um, and the residents just thought it was a natural spring.
And I just kept them in Syo.
It's not so funny because there are many people in that neighborhood that I live in. And they have their septic, how is it?
Septic.
Their sump pump, excuse me, this sump pump drainage coming out into their front yard. And in some yards, it goes across the sidewalk. And.
Ultimately, it runs right back in towards the house and they're pumping.
No, it goes then into the street and then to the storm drain. Yeah, so. But we have those areas throughout the neighborhood. They're all over.
And I, I just wanna, you know, thank, I'm, I'm very grateful our team found this and I did suggest to Brandon to. Because it's so significant to write up this written report, he did a, a nice job of writing it up. But I just wanna emphasize it's, it's extraordinary. So it's twenty years. And he estimates twenty four billion gallons of water. So it's, um, so I asked and he included in the report, I said, why did Syo Township never know? This leak was here. Um, and, and he explained that, um. You know, location, it was dubbed in a way. He says that makes no practical sense unless it was going to be used in the future. It's not very common. So they actually were surprised it was dubbed there and in that way. You know, Christie has provided preliminary information for the claim. We were gonna pull records to see what we could see about the developer and how they finished that stuff.
Brandon actually had the part. He brought it into his office and showed me and explained it to me, but he didn't say that's usually only a two year. Um, warranty with developers and that there's no way that you can go back twenty years.
Decades.
Decades.
So, you know, in our extraordinary, um, you know, we did our rate increases based on our, um. You know, rate study and we did have a significant, you know, water loss. This is part of it. It's not all of it. Certainly improving the efficiency, but this will hopefully stem part of it. But again, it's really unfortunate. Um, and I'm glad that they found it.
Yeah.
Yes, if you have a weird leak or what you think is a spring, please call the utility department, only if you're in the water and sewer district.
Okay, shall we move on to our next report?
And I just, I just wanna make one announcement on elections since this is our last meeting beforehand. Um, I wanna thank everybody for voting. Um, continue to vote. Come to Township Hall. We'll be here now continuously, um, through the weekend, both weekends through Election Day. You can come in to register to vote. You know anybody overseas who needs a ballot? They can, um, get one. Um, anybody who needs to register, wants to get an absentee ballot, and you can also begin casting those ballots. Um, in person here on Saturday, um, for nine continuous days. So everybody, please get out the vote. My second, um, request is please, if you get anything suspicious where it seems like somebody's. Texting you or sending you emails saying your ballot hasn't been returned or has been returned, any misinformation, please. Anything, um, you're getting, we wanna know about there if it's suspicious or questionable. And thank you to our nearly hundred election inspectors, um, who will be working over the next, um, two weeks.
Yep, and your deputy just left.
Yeah, yeah, everybody. The whole clerk's team and, and staff is, um, putting in a lot of effort and, um, utilities, I T. Everybody, um, does a lot of extra work, so I appreciate it.
Did you see the numbers what they were?
It was sixty nine hundred on Friday because Barb pulled it for me.
Yeah, so we've issued seven thousand forty one absentee ballots and we've gotten half of them back. We've gotten thirty five hundred back. So we have fifteen thousand voters, um, seven thousand of them have requested absentee ballots. Um, I think that we'll probably have quite a bit of uptake in early voting. Um, I will say of note, we, um, are serving our military voters. We've issued thirteen to our military. And a hundred and forty one to other overseas civilians. Um, and so just wanna appreciate everybody's doing a great job of getting out the vote and making sure that every, um, legitimate vote counts.
One last thing, Jessica, will you also talk about, uh, early voting that started in, was it Ann Arbor?
Oh, great point. Yeah, the city of Ann Arbor started their early voting on Monday, so there was a lot of news about it. So a lot of people have been coming in interested in early voting. Um, my message to everybody is just if you wanna vote, just come to Township Hall. And, and we'll get it done, so.
All right, let's move on to our, uh, update from G C S I. Stand with us, John Horford. And if you haven't met John, uh, well, even if you have, uh, John, why don't you introduce yourself and, um, we'll hear what you have to say.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm John Horford. I am your lobbyist from G C S I. Uh, first, I just wanna say, you know, thank you for the opportunity to represent Syo Township. I took over this account about a year ago. And our primary focus, when I took over, was finding a way to. Get some money to go towards the, the second fire department and, um. Through the efforts of the team, uh, and the legislature, primarily, uh. Felicia Braebeck and Angela Whitworth, who's the appropriations chair, who came down to meet, um, most of you in Syo. We were successful in getting a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to go towards that second. Uh, I think it's specifically actually gonna go towards the fire truck, but. We're, but, uh, we were, we were happy to get that. And then we are currently in the process of working to potentially get a book closing supplemental grant. So a book closing supplemental grant, uh, could be allocated depending on how the legislature chooses. To spend the remainder of the money that they have. So they've held back over three hundred million dollars. That the governor would like to use on economic development projects specifically. Currently, she does not have the votes in the legislature to make that happen. So that money, in theory, could go back to a book closing supplemental. And could be spent before the end of the year. A lot of that will just depend on what happens in November. Uh, if the Republicans win the House. You can almost be sure that the Democrats will spend that money, right? Before they have an opportunity, right? Uh, because if they don't spend that money, it gets passed off to the next budget. And then the Republicans would be in control. They'd be able to spend it. If the Democrats win the House, they could choose to spend it. Or they could choose to hold on to that money until the June budget. And then allow those funds to go towards projects at that time and just add an additional three hundred dol- or three hundred million dollars. To that, uh, amount that they're gonna have in June towards next year's budget. So currently, we are looking to, um. We're looking to get around five hundred thousand dollars is our ask. That number is based on a program that was put into the budget and then removed by Leo Chair Will Snyder. Who also came down to Syo from Muskegon to meet with all of you. Um, he had. This section of the budget that would have allowed up to twenty million dollars. With the max grant being allotted, being five hundred thousand, to go to fire departments and police. Stations all over the state of Michigan that was pulled from the budget. In part because of the governor wanting to hold these funds to go towards economic development projects. So if we aren't successful in getting that grant. At the end of this year, as part of the book closing supplemental, if Democrats maintain majority. Leo Chair Will Snyder will still be in that position and he will be trying again. To get that bucket of money essentially into the budget, which we've done a lot of the groundwork already. And we were, I believe that we would be one of the recipients if that was to be in next year's budget. So we've done a lot of that groundwork, but the other reason why, obviously I wanted to come in and talk to everybody, um. There's changes being made and I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that you can reach out to me. I'm very accessible. I'm happy to get on, you know, calls. I'm happy to come down and meet. Just to start planning out next steps for what you think we should be going after. What you think would benefit the township most. All right, so those are decisions that you all make. And we discuss those decisions and we come up with a path to move forward that makes sense. In terms of developing the right relationships, um, in terms of making the correct ask based on the makeup of the legislature. Cause even if it isn't, you know, the Democrats in control of the House, there would still be, you know, opportunities to. Um, you know, potentially receive appropriations through that same process. So I just wanted to come, give anyone an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. And then just again, reiterate that I would be more than happy to talk with anyone, meet with anyone. Come down and just start really formulating, uh, a game plan for future asks. On behalf of the township outside of what has already been developed through our work with, um. Andy Joyce, Will.
It sounds like what you're talking about is potentially something for the future board.
Yes, but there are several, several, several of you will still be on the board, correct? Okay. Okay, four, okay. Yeah, okay.
And three of them are sitting in the audience.
Yes.
Oh, three of them. Three of the future.
Oh, yeah.
He's over there.
Yes. Yes, I've spoken with two of them, yes. So, yeah, it. So, yeah, and I'm happy to meet with them as well, happy to do, you know, whatever the board sees as the the best path forward. But just wanted to make it very, very clear that I'm very available. Yes.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
And I, I do think it'd be good for the, for the new board, um we'll, we will, we do plan to, you know, start with capital planning pretty quickly, updating our capital planning plan. Um, and then maybe at that point, the new board can talk about um how we want to engage with the lobbyists because this is an area where from, from our side, we really wanted to improve, to come up with, you know, written priorities of what we're going for and actually have a more uh formal process on our end for how we engage with our state reps, so.
I'll be ready.
There's always the challenge that the state reps may have a different agenda than Syo Township, but
Yeah.
that's part of, that's part of the game.
Yeah, that's almost inevitable that that will happen in some way, shape or form. But that is a part of the process is just navigating that and just finding, you know, areas where we can all agree and move forward.
Thank you very much for coming and for being patient to.
No, of course, of course. Yeah, no questions.
No more questions for, for John.
I can answer.
I, you gave me your card at the, actually, what was that, last February?
Yes.
Um, did you?
I do.
In the snowstorm. Yes, if you could, um, do you have?
I have his card.
Okay, maybe the new.
I call it.
Oh, or you've already done that. You're at it. Oh, okay. Yeah, but thank you. Yes, definitely. We, we need to have a game plan, especially for uh, we need the second fire station.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whatever we can do.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right, well, that brings us to Brownfield Plan for Affordable Housing Component of Crosswoods Apartments. This is a, a discussion only this evening. Um, we have, uh, well, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. But um the primary purpose of this is to have a presentation delving into the tax increment financing um housing, housing element of the Brownfield program. And um Nathan, uh, you're sort of in the driver's seat for that, but um, uh, I'll let you guys take it over.
Okay, um, can I share my screens? I have the PowerPoint here.
Okay.
Or unless you already have it.
And and I didn't mean to cut you off, but yeah, you guys can each introduce yourselves before you plunge into the presentation in the great.
I'm Dan Kellar, the developer. You've all seen me here over the years. Nathan Vogt with Washaw County Office of Community and Economic Development. I run the Brownfield program and staff the Brownfield Authority at the county level.
And I'm Jared Velka with Warner Norcross. I'm the chair of our economic incentives.
Sorry.
What's your role?
Here with, here with Dan, with the development team. I, I was just going to clarify.
Thank you. So Nathan, you're a panelist.
Yep, I, I got it and that, that'll pick me up, right? So I don't need to have.
Yes, please have your mic, speaker and camera off.
Yes.
Got it. Terrible echo.
I imagine. Is that?
Here we go.
Is this one enough? Is that good enough? All right, well, yeah, thanks for having us uh tonight. And again, my role here with the county is um to kind of facilitate the process and I'll talk, I'm going to talk a little bit about, go back to one-on-one, Brownfield's one-on-one and then tell you how the, the housing component kind of fits into that. So going back to uh the, the authority, the county formed an authority in nineteen ninety-nine and we invited everybody to join and most of the county did. So we have a unique, we're in a unique position around the state. There's not many regional authorities and it's a great partnership. It's been a great partnership. Uh, I was happy to approve the first plan last year for three hundred norzib with you all and here I am again. Um, and so the role again for us is I work with a local unit, many local units, Ann Arbor, Pittsfield, Ipsy. Uh, work on the plan, work with the developers, work with my uh authority to get a plan to you. If it doesn't get through the local unit, doesn't go any, anywhere, it won't go up to the authority, it won't go up to the Board of Commissioners. So my role is really to facilitate the process. And again, the purpose of this act, uh, this is a discretionary uh decision on the part of any local unit. But the purpose is to really fill in uh the financial gaps, projects, level the playing fields, playing field between a greenfield site and a brownfield site. Um, obviously, in this case, I've added and read the, the new housing component that was added in twenty twenty-three. It's not the best fit admittedly, but it uses the same tool, which is the tax, tax increment financing. And that's why the legislature, the practitioners said, okay, we can kind of put this in here, we can make it work. It's a new aspect to the Brownfield Act and it uses the same mechanism to, to get you there. Um, and so I think in the end, we're, we're trying to figure it out. Um, I'm talking to many different developers all over the county. Uh, this is the first one that's kind of moving forward uh here in, in the township. And again, traditionally, site eligibility is a contaminated site or maybe an obsolete or blighted building. In this case, we have a housing property, uh either market rate and or affordable or attainable or some mixture that qualifies you in to get, get your foot in the door to use this act just for housing alone. There doesn't have to be cleanup involved. There doesn't even have to be other non-environmental activities that used to go to the MBDC. It will all now go to MISTHA if we're talking about a housing uh development or housing property. Whether it's affordable or not. The answer is maybe. Uh, technically, you need just one affordable unit to kind of for sure get in, in the process. But there's some language in there that we're not sure how got in there that's not clear, might be if you could support even market rate. But let's set that aside because it's not what we're talking about here. But um at least one unit of affordable for sure technically uh would get you in the door in this process.
Level the playing field between a brownfield and a greenfield. My understanding is we have incentives for brownfields because we want to clean up pollution. What playing field needed to be leveled for?
Yeah, so that's more speaking of the traditional approach.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, let's, let's kind of set that aside, even though again, it's confusing. It's all one act. Uh, but yeah, that's the traditional when you, when you have contamination of some sort, usually. And then TIF, I think you all understand how, how TIF works. Uh, you take the base value and if a plan is approved, any additional taxable value, taxes paid on that increment is what is captured. So you're not taking away any existing revenues. It's, it's always future revenues that you're using to reimburse eligible activities or in this case, uh also supporting uh attainable housing. I'm going to skip over that because that's not really relevant. And this talks about different eligible activities, again, more in the traditional Brownfield arena. So I'm just going to skip right over that. Sorry, this was, got some extra stuff. So for MISTHA and their agency review, they do have a lot of the non-environmental activities that used to be associated with uh contaminated sites that the MBDC would approve and they also allow those for housing properties, housing developments. So public infrastructure, actually, they're more flexible. They allow public and private infrastructure, off-site and onsite. Site preparation, um demolition, other safety improvements. So I think what MISTHA has done is they said, we're going to have a broader definition of what's eligible. And if you've looked at the draft plan that has been provided, there's things like solar panels that uh the developer is interested in, in uh, uh, including M- MBDC actually doesn't allow some of these things, but MISTHA does because they want to kind of broaden it out and provide more incentive. I talked about the legislation in July of twenty twenty-three that got added to this act. I think I talked about the eligible property. Again, just one, one unit would, would qualify or even in a mixed-use building would qualify if there's commercial on the ground floor and residential above.
So what do you mean by unit? One apartment?
Yeah, one apartment, yeah.
You're kidding me. Okay, go on.
But again, it's, that's the technical uh way to get in, but I, I can't see a community approving one of these with just one unit. I mean, you know, doesn't, doesn't really make sense.
This, this one has forty, right?
Twenty percent of the, the product.
Yeah.
Forty-three.
Three, yeah.
So, so we're not talking about a situation with one unit.
Right. So the, the new part that MISTHA has introduced into the act is this way to calculate what they're calling potential rent loss or potential development loss. In this case, it's rent loss. We have a four rent product and you can take uh what's deemed to be market rent or if these units were just offered at market versus an eighty percent. In this case, he's, he's proposing an eighty percent AMI maximum income for a renter. And what is that, what is that loss monthly, annually for all the units? And so again, if you've looked at the plan, you can see a calculation of seven or eight million just from that calculation alone to support the attainable housing units. Then the other pieces, the other eligible activities that I talked about, infrastructure, site preparation, the solar, uh those sorts of things that support the overall development are also another piece of what is being requested. And that's over uh twenty years. Right, and then the projection is eighteen or, or twenty years of reimbursement. Uh, the affordability period would be twenty years is what the developer is proposing.
So can I clarify the affordability period would need the, that's the period of like affordable housing.
Workforce housing.
Workforce housing.
That's right, eighty percent AMI.
Right.
So only for twenty years.
That is what is being proposed.
So that would be locked in for twenty years or?
Right. And, and that would be through an affordable housing agreement that would be between the authority. I'm not sure the town, township would be, would be a party to that. We could worry about that later. But it would be an affordable housing agreement that the developer signs with the authority. We have the obligation of enforcing, making sure that there, those are being monitored. I have to report to MISTHA every year, just like I do to the MBDC and Eagle. I now have to report to MISTHA. So that's our um responsibility to do that in conjunction with this agreement, with this contract.
The point of reference for the board in the recent PUD we approved for the Goodrich Theater. We um had, you know, one of the potential uses is eighty percent AMI. We had a table of, you know, certain number of affordable units. It, it was kind of as a sort of a density bonus. So that was all negotiated as part of the PUD, as part of that, and Mariah and Will and others were in that meeting. We had the developer really work through what he thought um they could afford to do. And we also put in there in our final motion that as part of that, we would commit to pursuing uh housing TIF or a pilot that were to go forward. And so I just reflect that because I think that that's another project that, you know, we've, a PUD that we approved with sort of more workforce housing in mind. Certainly, we need a lot of it. And I know there's other housing projects, but I'd just be a kind of a question for me, maybe a future meeting is just like your advice, Nathan, when, when we're looking at these things, which, you know, potential housing developments would be right for this because we're like, like this one, just approved the PUD um a couple, maybe four weeks ago. Um, but now suddenly and, and all the community benefits. And then now suddenly we're looking at the TIF separately. So just for us, you know, we're handling this one differently than we, we're kind of handling the Goodrich.
You're saying that with Goodrich, the board evaluated in the PUD and the other factors at the same time.
The board evaluated, yes, the desire to have workforce housing and how we would fund it likely through a potential TIF. This was just coming into legislation that we certainly, until they come back with a proposal for housing and we look at it, but we had made the commitment in the actual PUD motion that we agreed to that we would um work toward trying to meet that affordable housing. So it was sort of integrated planning, which um would make sense to me. It's not that we can't do it this way. I think what's Nathan, when I start seeing page six and seven, table one, eligible activities, um to Kathleen Brandt's point, I'd have to look at the development agreement that we just adopted four weeks ago. Um, but the development agreement, certainly, some of these infrastructure improvements, I believe, were also, I mean, we just approved something, understanding that the developer had the plan and, and financing to do this project without the subsidy. So that's number one. Number two, the community benefits that were included in that development agreement. Some of them, I'd have to see if they might not overlap, like EV charging and some of these other things were supposed to be community benefits. And so it sort of poses a conundrum for us if we were to publicly subsidize something that was supposed to be a private contribution.
I can, I can address that.
Okay, yeah, and I just have to look at it side by side and, and things like that. But it's, it, because it's, because we just approved a housing development without this information in front of us, it makes it more complicated than if we'd had it together.
Well, why don't we let Nathan finish his presentation and then we'll turn, we'll have time for.
And none of that is Nathan's fault. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not as ready with the PUD uh in that process.
Oh, I'm sorry, the plan, the plan used.
No, I'm not as familiar with the PUD. I know what a PUD is. Yeah, all right. Um, so I just want to make a point about how you calculate this rent loss. Um, MISTHA has come up with this really broad formula statewide that what we found everywhere in this county, even in downtown Ann Arbor, is too high. Even Ann Arbor doesn't use this number. It's, it's over three thousand dollars for a studio. So what we've advised, what, as I talked to developers and I, as I talked to Dan, was we need to use a real number for market. What are you going to be renting these other units for in the same development? Then take the eighty percent AMI rent, that's our delta, right? We're, we're just tiffing or subsidizing that difference. So um I advise everybody that we, we should do this. I can't imagine many communities using that really high MISTHA formula. But it's there as a guidepost for a community that I think to use, but we're not doing that here. What Dana said is, here's what I'm going to rent the other market rate units for. Here's eighty percent, here's the delta. And if you look at the calculations provided in the tables in the plan, you can see how that was arrived at that figure. Um, it would be the table, uh, where in the plan is that?
The tax increment financing.
Exhibit B one.
Table one.
Fourth one, exhibit B one. It's got yellow highlight.
Yellow highlights.
B one.
Well, it's on two seventy-one. Possibly.
Possibly.
You see that loss right there.
It's an exhibit. It's got yellow highlighting. It's a table.
This one?
Yeah.
That one.
All right.
This is the two seventy.
Thought it was, I saw something.
Yeah.
Different one. No, yeah. Um, oh, you know what? Yours is unhighlighted. I decided to print it. Oh, okay. Kind of word clarity.
Did you want to go through that at all? You want me to keep going and that we can come back to that if this question, go through it? So this is basically using the approach MISTHA advises to use. You, you have the units on the left uh by type. So you've got some studios, uh, as I say. Uh, you show, let's see, uh. Studios, one bedroom, two. Yeah, thanks. So under type, where it says, the, the column says type, you can, you've got to break out each unit. And then you've got the control rent, which, which is the market rent. And then you can see the project rent, which is the eighty percent AMI rent, so it's lower. Then you come up with the difference. So for each of these units, every month, uh, let's just take the one bedroom at the very top, the garden court, one bedroom. The, it's five hundred and seven dollars lost per month. You multiply that by six types of these units by twelve months, over twenty years. You come up with a grand total number. And we, in this case, we've got seven hundred and thirty thousand and eighty dollars for this one unit type. And you're just going down by each unit type, coming up with a calculation over twenty years, what that rent loss is. You come up with a grand total of seven million two eighty-four, four eighty. And that is a, a number approved at the time of Brownfield Plan approval that then gets reimbursed over those eighteen or twenty projected years in the TIF table. And it could be the tax, the taxable value. And it could be the tax, the taxable value, and this has happened often in the last five years especially, the taxable value is actually higher, there's a quicker payoff. But he was still be obligated to provide that twenty years of affordability, even if he gets paid off in year fifteen. So the affordability, affordability, affordability period is set. Because we can't really, we don't know what new millages might come into play, what the taxable value will be over time. All we can do today is project that as best we can and come up with a grand total of uh subsidized rent. And that's that seven million figure, and that's locked in. That doesn't flow.
These AMI units will come from a range of the different units in this development.
Yep, it looks like he's got one bedroom, two bedroom studio, and then, and then he's broken them out by uh, it looks like, you know, podium buildings, carriage house, the different types of buildings. He's showing those, you know, one bedroom and a different type of building is slightly different rent. So that's why he's broken those out.
Be qualifying for these units. Do you do uh their finances or their financial background? Do they have to apply for them?
Right, so part of his obligation and mine, and the authorities quite frankly, would be to ensure that anybody renting would not exceed the maximum income uh allowed. So an eighty percent income household, one person, let's say, is sixty-three thousand dollars a year. He would have to, or his management company would have to ask for income documentation, tax returns. And this is something our department does a lot. This is what, is what we do. Um, get the documentation, make sure that they qualify, and then usually there's an annual renewal and then, and you have to requalify. And, and if they don't qualify, then that, what we often do is make that unit market, and then another unit has to become affordable.
So it's a subs- subsidy for the renter?
Absolutely. Right, he's, he's agreeing to rent uh, uh, to those eighty percent households at the lower number in that table.
Thanks, Nathan. Um, colleagues with Landmark, Eric, Mom, there's a lot of these agreements. Private parties. So, I mean, I, I just would say one thing too, is that, you know, I think it, if the township ever were to use this program with a private developer, it'd be really important for the township to be a party to the agreement. And that's something we talked about with our um discussions and we put in the motion with the Goodrich site, is that it would be settled to a future affordability agreement with a side on township, you know, even if there were some county monitoring. Simply so that the township always continues to have some skin in the game and actually monitoring um.
I've just never done these before, so this is the first one. So I would say as long as like legally it works out, I don't see the township not being able to be a party to that agreement, but ultimately because we're the authority, it's like our responsibility. So.
But yeah, it's like your responsibility and, and then it's our, it's our residents and law to pack.
Who is responsible for the annual monitoring and reports? Who does that?
So this is again, new territory for us. How we envision this happening would be uh, the developer or whoever's running the developer, right, the, the, the complex, the apartment complex, will be responsible for initially accepting applications, qualifying those renters. They would have to annually report to us and we get to review, and we're probably going to have to pay a third party consulting because we don't have the people to to do. If we start getting tens and dozens and hundreds of units through this program, we, we don't have the people. So then, that, that, the data submitted to us would be reviewed. We make sure it's all legit, then I would have to report that to MISHTA every year as well. So I think there would be a process. By April first, I get it from the developer. By July first, it's approved by whoever, you know, I'm hired to, to look at it, and then I have to report it to MISHTA.
So you're saying the process isn't in place yet?
Well, if I could, I, if I could add to it, um, uh, so I, I've done a, a couple of these and we've received MISHTA approval on it. As Nathan said, this is the first one coming through the county, so I'm not, not trying to take the mic from him, but I think I might have some additional comments to offer on that. So i- in, in most cases, they'll require a property manager who is MISHTA-approved for income monitoring. So there are applications uh at the time of, you know, a, a prospective renter. Um, they gather all that income data um that they, most of these companies are MISHTA-approved because they operate in the, the light tech, um, you know, world with low-income housing tax credit units. So uh, MISHTA won't approve a work plan unless you designate who that's going to be. Um, additionally, you can take uh training, there's a training session with MISHTA where if the county wanted to be, instead of a third party, they want to handle that in-house. I don't think Nathan's going to want to do that. Uh, and just due to time constraints, but you can take a MISHTA training and get certified for that. Um, so from a management standpoint, typically it's property managers. They're the ones that have the interfacing with the prospective tenants. Um, and, and they would go through that income qualification process.
So you said you've done this in other areas. This will be in the first and last two counties, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I've, I've talked to many different developers in the last year and a half, but this is the first one now formally moving forward.
What are the other ones in the state that have been the, the names of that?
Um, I've done two in Ottawa County that have been approved by MISHTA.
Ottawa?
Ottawa County, yep. I've got two in Grand Rapids, um, better, they've been approved by the local Brownfield Authority. Um, I know there's one, um, Grant, Grant Travers in Detroit.
Which one's got it?
Approved, yeah, yeah.
How long does it take to get the structure for approving, application, monitoring, all of that? How long does it take to get a setup?
Um, so to Nathan's point, I, I like to say, and, and I, I'll, I'll say this and I'll maybe take a couple step, steps back because I think it's, as opposed to diving into the weeds a bit, it's, it's better to understand, I think, how MISHTA rolled this program out. Um, but implementation wise, I'll say they're flying the plane while they're trying to build it. Um, you know, they I'll say that lightly. So they, they, they've approved them, they understand what direction they want to go with it. But I, I think when you take a step back and look at what this program was intended, um, this program was rolled out. As Nathan said, their formulas for determining, determining reasonableness are very generous. Um, the structure that we had before you, I have as a comparison of what MISHTA would, would deem reasonable under this circumstance. Um, their number is fourteen point three million, just on potential rent loss. Um, working with Nathan, we're down to seven point two eight, right? So I guess to put it bluntly, you know, the governor tasked them with building housing, right, uh, of all types. Um, I think we understand, everybody needs it across all spectrums. Um, they, the statewide housing plan uh has a goal to deliver seventy-five thousand units in the next five years. If you start to break that down, um, this is a two hundred and twelve unit project. Um, that's a small chunk of what they're trying to uh, uh, attack. So this program is very broad. Um, quite frankly, this project itself could probably be easily over twenty to thirty million dollars of eligible costs if, if you pushed it to the limits. Um, we're cognizant of that. We're not trying to push those limits, but in the environment we're faced with right now, you know, when Dan set out to do this project, uh, and, and to where he's at now, he's forty percent higher in terms of cost. Um, not to mention the interest rates, you know, more than doubling, tripling, you, you name it. So those are the challenges, um, and, and I wanted to address the timing piece. Um, some of that, you know, not wanting to get the cart ahead of the horse without the PUD, there is no project, um, right? Uh, how we have this structured with some of the infrastructure and such. I mean, we can, you know, we're trying to get to a number to make the project work, so we can deliver.
Look at it alongside the development agreement. If that's not your role, that's okay. I'm just wondering, has anyone looked at this alongside what they approved six weeks ago?
I, I understand that, and I'm not putting Nate on the, Nathan on the spot here.
I know it's not Nathan's role.
Um, quite frankly, it, it's more of an optics thing. Uh, you know, people can get behind infrastructure. There's a public benefit to that. When you start raising that potential rent loss to say, hey, under MISHTA's reasonableness, we can get fourteen million dollars, we're eligible for fourteen million dollars. That's sometimes hard to grasp. You know, we're looking at it more from a number to help support the project to be able to move forward as opposed to the activity piece. But I can totally appreciate and respect that. Um, and the, the kind of assumption is more from a public benefit standpoint, it's easier to point to those infrastructure items than it is to a potential rent laws. Not, it's not picking anything away from the attainability component here. It's just uh, it's hard to, it's hard to really envision that for some people.
Yeah, yeah. I just want the series of the board decisions to have integrity taken together. Um, so if we, you know, have a public benefit, you know, that has been promised to us by a developer, we're not six weeks later being asked to pay for that public benefit. The, the other thing too is, um, and, and just one more point is I, I do think that the purpose, I think it's, you know, we need more housing of all types, we need more affordable housing. I've been a proponent of that. Um, but, but I think that, you know, we, we approved a PUD for a certain number of housing units. And so my understanding and expectation is provided that, you know, it's successful, that that housing will be built. So, um, you know, I don't know for a project where we've already, you know, approved, you know, we're, we're, you know, expecting the housing already. This program seems like a good incentive to sort of create housing, you know, that wouldn't otherwise be created. And, and I guess what I'm, um, it seems like this housing is already going to be created. And I am, I'm certainly supportive of TIF and pilots and all sorts of things to get affordable housing where we need it. But, um, you know, this housing, you know, we, we've already approved and, you know, I, I expect um will be built. So, so this doesn't really cha-change much. Whether we do this or not, I would expect the housing to be built.
Yeah, I guess I, I'd like to address the timing component. We did reach out, we actually had a meeting here with the township planner and attorney, I think it was in August or July, um, to present this as a possible tool to support the project. So we had reached out well ahead of the PUD approval process to try and explore this as an option. Um, as I had mentioned, it is a relatively new program in terms of implementation. So understanding, uh, you know, how that was kind of working through the MISHTA process.
Okay.
Wasn't fully, yeah, I, I just wanted to, to be transparent with you. This, I, I want to make it clear, this is not an afterthought. It is something that we had reached out. Um, Nathan was here and presented to the township, uh, you know, planner and, and attorney as well, as this is a potential option.
Um, I can interject, because I wasn't in all of the meetings, but I was in some meetings. Um, my sense is that, um, our planning consultant, um, as this, as you were sort of laying out the, the idea for the TIF financing, reached a conclusion that it really is, it needed to be sort of decoupled from the actual site plan approval because it's, it's a separate issue. How, how you pay for the development is a separate question from, is the development meaning, meaning all of the requirements of the, you know, the PUD? And, and so that's, she's sort of stepped back from the whole, you know, financing question.
If I could interject, um, Laura Krebs and I discussed this very issue this morning. We talk once a week now, no matter what's happening, about all planning issues. And she, I asked her about, shouldn't the PUD and this TIF issue have been presented to the board at the same time? And she said that, well, she had talked to Mariah and the two of them had agreed that maybe it would be easier to split them. Uh, but that's not the way it's done in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, well, I mean, here we are, right?
Here we are.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I, I would, I would say that I, and, and if I misunderstood, it was not my understanding that the, that this project was dep- was one hundred percent dependent on the TIF. And if that's, if that's true, that was a misunderstanding. So yes, we, we thought that the two things were separate. You, getting the PUD approved and talking about the financing as two separate issues.
Let's talk about this later.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, because it, because it sounds like, you know, the housing's already going to be developed. Now whether or not we approve this TIF. So it's, it sounds like.
I, I wouldn't say that's.
No, that's not a fair statement. Okay.
I, 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 I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, there's a significant impact, you know, without necessary support as to what type of project you get, um, right? So there's a lot that goes into being able to finance these projects, uh, and um, you know, what, what somebody's able to move forward with and afford and justify an investment on. Um, you know, a, a lot depends on that.
Okay, and so the, so the, sorry, just so that I, back to Nathan's table then, the, the projected rent loss, that's really the kind of subsidy to the resident, right, to make it affordable.
For the forty-three units, right?
For the forty-three.
That calculation, yep.
Yeah, and then the kind of subsidy to the, to build is really what's kind of listed in the infrastructure, is that correct?
Yeah, again, if you look at, so where we landed in, in working with Nathan to come up with this potential rent loss was, um, you know, there's, there's no defined method. MISHTA has their uh method in terms of what they consider reasonable, which that's the bottom chart, the fourteen million number. Some communities, as Nathan's pointed out, they're not comfortable with the control rents. They might say we'll consider market rate being a hundred and twenty percent or above. So anything below that, we would give you that. Um, Nathan has uh worked and come up with a difference between the developer's proposed market rate rents and the one hundred percent AMI number, uh, uh, or I'm sorry, eighty percent number, uh, that is his commitment. So I would say that is the most conservative approach to that. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying uh, from other communities, they've, they've taken a broader spectrum. So I would say Nathan's, you know, keeping, keeping that number uh tight. So I would say these are as realistic as possible that you can, you can assume when looking at these.
Can I add some more context, Jessica, to?
Please, thank you.
And he's sort of skirting around the edges, but I basically have directed them to approach us in a different way that I felt would be easier to consume, quite frankly, and easier to understand. And that's why you're getting the actual eligible activities, like infrastructure and solar panels, as being shown as being supported, rather than just coming and saying, this project has a development gap, a financial gap. And that initial, in initial discussions, that, that's what they came forward with was uh, we have a significant gap. And I said, but we have this ability to support hard costs on this development. I think that's an easier thing to wrap your, wrap your arms around. So that's the other piece of this that he's not coming, coming out quite and saying, but I sort of directed them to approach it in this way. So blame me partially for there being some overlap with some of the PUDs.
Understand where this is at, so it's a.
I can appreciate the comment you made in terms of if it's part of a development agreement, we're requiring you to do it as part of it, then we're expecting you to do that. So why should we underwrite it? Why should we underwrite it?
Well, and it, it was actually kind of a, you know, and that, you know, very, you know, some community benefits. And then, um, so, and again, I need to look at it side by side, so I apologize. But when I look at number two here, you know, some of these things certainly are the very, the very things named in the development agreement. And I'm not, again, I don't know who's, it's certainly the board's responsibility to take some time and look at what we just approved six weeks ago or four weeks ago, side by side with what this um supplemental proposal is.
Can I ask a quick question here along these lines? Um, you said that this project has a development gap. Or you knew it had a development gap. When did you know that?
Well, that, that, that gap is essentially to be determined until you ink a deal on a construction uh project and close on financing. Because of the volatility of construction costs and interest rates, you know, there, there's, if, if you want a quality project with everything that's outlined in this, you know, that stuff costs money and it continues to fluctuate until you ink the deal and until you open doors essentially. Because you, you do run into.
It's changed so much in the last year. If I, if I could just interject, a year and a half ago, our, our construction costs were forty million dollars. Now they're fifty-four. That's the difference. That's what's happened. Interest rates went from three percent to eight percent. That's what's going on. So these are ongoing things. This isn't, no one's trying to hide something. These are, these are things that are, that are hitting every developer. The reason the governor and the company did this program is because they recognized this uncertainty in our market. And so nothing's being built. People can't build. So this is a way of offsetting those changing costs that no one can anticipate. So this is a way of offsetting those changing costs that no one can anticipate. It's like you go to buy a house now. Two years ago, it might have cost you two hundred thousand. Now it costs you three hundred and forty thousand. This is what's going on in our market. And so as a, as a developer who has to pay for construction costs to, to provide that. We are hit, we are directly in the line of fire. And that's why this program, one of the reasons it was developed.
And if, if I could, I, I want to get back to your question. So. I, I, part of this is, this is the second brownfield project in South Township. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, no, we did a commercial.
This would be the second, right? The, the second that's being requested. All right, I didn't do the first one. Um, we took some, you know, we had a meeting, we discussed, does it go with the P D? Do you break it apart? So, you know, we, we listened and it sounded like maybe the preference would be that the two should have come together. Um, but we were taking directions from what we assume are people closer to that and might have a better handle of that. So.
And, and I think the, the program, the purpose of this program, it sounds like, is to, you know, help address. The cost of building housing.
There, there's, yes, given the initiative to green light and gas pedal. Get as much housing as you can build as quickly as you can because of this demand.
Yeah, and so, so I think for, for, for me as a, as a policymaker, you know, knowing. You know, part, part of, and I don't, you know, certainly, I think, I think technically nothing in our. Um, P U D ordinance, you know, says that it has to be a. Fiscally solvent, you know, project, but, you know, I mean, that, that is something. Maybe we should, we should look at, I mean, yeah, we should talk about this because it, it seems, I guess I kind of, um. Took it for granted that, that when there's a proposal and, and we change our ordinance. From industrial to P U D to allow housing for a certain number of units. And we go, go through this whole process that acts number of units is, um. What the applicant is prepared to build.
Well, just as an observation, um. We, I've been in this business for a long time. For twenty-five years, you could know what your costs were. You cannot know what your costs are now. And that's why the governor and the state has created this program because there's a lot of demand, but there's no supply. Because you cannot know what your costs are. So this is a way of stepping in. And assisting that process and creating housing. The whole purpose on this act is to create housing. And so what we've tried to do is implement that. And at the same time. One of the things that was, the township said they wanted, that they wanted to see less than market rate housing. How are you going to do that in this market? Well, this is a product that allows that to take place. Okay, it supports it. You cannot build it without it. It's impossible.
Sure, I do want to allow Nathan to finish his.
Yes, I was just gonna say that going back to this program being very broad and the intent of it to really allow. Communities to use the tool and support to a greater extent than ever before housing. They will allow you to just, uh, plug a financial gap. And again, that's sort of in earlier versions, it was clear based on what we were reviewing, there's a financial gap. I steered them away from just throwing a number, giving us a number and saying, let's support actual improvements to the property. Just, but I'm just pointing out, it's very broad and this was being proposed. I know it's a, a, a big number. Uh, but it is well within the intent of the program.
And I just understand it in rough numbers. We're looking at eighteen million. Um, so the, the seven point two, the housing development activities, just using that number. That that is the subsidy that would go to, effectively go to the renter.
Well, the renter doesn't receive that.
I know they don't directly receive it, but is that the equivalent?
That, that directly supports the developer renting forty-three units for a lower number than the market.
Right, and then.
That just reimburses me.
It, 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 it supports that commitment for twenty years of, of income qualifying, focused at eighty percent.
Right, exactly, that table. And then, and so that, that real kind of financing gap is. Kind of more reflected in the infrastructure and site preparation subtotal, those, those numbers.
I guess you can look at it as a pie, right? And you can. Cut the pie up in different ways.
I guess, I, I guess, and here's a hypothetical, not that you need to answer on the spot. If, if this project were not doing any affordable housing, let's just say, you know, market rate. What would the TIF ask be? And I'm not asking you to answer right now, but I'm, I'm asking that conceptually so that I kind of understand. Um, you know, how, how much of.
I, I think of the affordable housing piece as revenue neutral almost. Cause it's a direct calculation. There's no incentive. What is the incentive for the developer to offer the housing if it's a direct? So there's gotta be, uh, you know, when I talk to other townships that can't do non-environmental, I say, there's gotta be another piece, other incentive for. The developer to provide the housing, the affordable housing, but also do the project. And that's where this other stuff.
Yeah, that's like the eleven, or the whatever that revenue is at eleven, okay.
Yeah, and that, that's where the difficulty is in terms of being TIF eligible activities. To Nathan's point, there is a provision in there that actually allows a hundred percent market rate stuff. Um, I did one in, um, South Haven. That it was just for the infrastructure, right? That's what the developer needed. They just needed, you know, to offset enough, which was the infrastructure figure. And, and, you know, we did a plan on that, um. Plainfield Township's another one. They've done two now. Um, wa- awaiting while work plan approval from, from MISHDA. But it, it is a tool being looked at because of the limited toolbox, you know, it's not like you can, I think to Nathan's point earlier. You know, the M E D C has historically supported a lot of, a lot of projects. Um, you know, not necessarily a hundred percent housing, which this is. So this program came along. It kind of piggybacked on the Brownfield program because everybody was familiar enough with it. Um, that, you know, it was, it was the, the avenue that they used to implement this. Uh, I, I personally thought probably should be its own act, but this is what we ended up with and, and, and you work with what you're given, so.
And the authorities already exist. It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I, I do want to point out that this, this effort to try and use this new tool that the legislature, the governor has created. Um, is responsive to something that the township said that it wanted to see. Um, not only from your development, but from other residential developments in. Uh, in dense residential developments. So we wanted to see more affordable units.
But, but not anything we approved six weeks ago on this project.
Well, it came up in that conversation where, you know, are, are there affordable units? And at that time, no, they aren't, they weren't part of the plan. So. In some, I, what I'm, all I'm pointing out is that this affordability element is something that the township has said that it wants.
We pursued this because the township said they wanted to see affordable units. So what we went out, is we looked at how, how you could do that. This is the only program on the market that the state has that would allow us to do this. And so what they've done is you get, you essentially, you, you get paid back for what you, what you give as a, and it doesn't cost. You folks anything. It's coming out of the taxes that are held. It isn't like money's being paid out of your pocket. We pay so much money a year in taxes, a portion of it gets repaid back, okay?
It's, 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 you know, it would be, it would be. Dan's team paying the property tax bill, a portion of those are captured and reimbursed over time. And it's all. Increment generated from their investment, right? So, um, over, over a period of time. So they put the money. Up, up front, uh, and they get, you know, some of it back over time.
So that's ta-table two. I just wanted to clarify, it would be capturing. Um, the, the, the school captures, and I know some of those are handled differently. But the Washaw County, our general township operating. Our open space village, our transit village, our park village, our fire services. Set special assessment soon to be village if passes. Um, county operating, library operating, Wa-Washaw. Um, Community College, W I S D, and any of the new ones. So it, it's kind of. Um, are, are all of these subject to this tip or can some be? Accepted if they're.
No, the act, no, you have to capture everything equally at the same percentage, you know, hundred percent or whatever, but. You can't, you can't carve out. There's no opt-out, um, and everything is, um, except if it's a debt. Debt villages cannot be captured. That's the one exception.
You mentioned special assessment.
Fire, the, the fire one currently, the one point three five fire is currently, uh, township-wide special assessment under P A thirty-three. Um, it's up for voters on November fifth. Um, and it would be a millage. Um, again, it's a, it's a particular special assessment under P A thirty-three, so it's calculated as a one point three five mil. But I would defer to legal on that.
Ad valorem. And if it's calculated on millage, then that's, that's captured, should be captured.
Okay, so just to clarify, sorry. You're saying all of the taxes that Jessica just listed. Which included Washaw Community College, Library, Fire Department, W I S D. All of those would essentially be committed to the developer. And they would not go to these organizations.
That's correct.
Anything that's being paid there now is not captured under the brownfield, which I know is not.
That's, so I'm kind of using the term loosely.
Yeah.
But they would not go to these various organizations, Washington Community College, W I S D.
That's how it works, whether you're a D D A, whether you're a Brownfield, whether any TIF district, that's how it works.
Above, above the base. Yeah, it's, it's all generated increment they've generated from their investment.
So, so Kathy, and, and on your point, Kathy, um, looking just at the fire services, if it's just at one point three five, let's say. The millage doesn't pass, we're continuing to work with one point three five mil. Over twenty years, it will capture seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars from the fire department.
I mean, not, not if it's a special assessment.
Yeah, if it is taxed, it is, uh, ad valorem.
The one point three five would not be captured.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, I thought I was hearing Nathan say he thought it would be captured.
Which is a, which is a village.
Right.
Not a special assessment.
So if, if it passes next month, then it would, that would be a village and it would be subject to this. If it doesn't pass, it would stay in assessment and it would not be subject to a TIF.
Okay, so that's seven hundred and eighty-six. And, and again. You, everybody look into this, but if, if that's not included here, I was, I was just trying, trying to look here just for some. Kind of perspective of how much investment here, like with the township operating, it'd be five hundred and thirty thousand. From the township transit village, it would be two hundred and two thousand. From township open space, it would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And from parks, it would be three hundred and seventy-two. I mean. It's not money that you have now, though. I, I understand that.
So I, I'm pro Brownfield, so I go around and, and not even talking about this project. What I always say is. It's money that doesn't exist now. And if, if nothing is built, then there's nothing gonna be generated new anyway.
But, but I, I would just say with, with respect to our taxpayers, um, I, one of them. Um, is that, that, you know, it, it is, it is, you know, there, there. Questions that we're putting to our taxpayers in good faith. We just had a renewal of the. Transit village for ten years where we said, okay, we're gonna do this. We just looked at the projection. Two meetings ago where we said, hey, we don't have enough money with what we just renewed. In year four, we're gonna have to look at it and make some hard decisions about cutting transit services. Or bringing in money from the D D A or something. And so. I just think we need to consider any impact on at least a couple of our villages very carefully. Um, because we, we've already acknowledged we're, we're short in certain areas, um, so.
If, if I could just add to that, I mean, but, you know, a, a, a comment back to that would be. The only way to increase the revenue you're bringing in is expand your tax base and. It's extremely difficult to do that under the current environment with interest rates and construction costs. So. That's why I can tell you, if it was as easy as just sticking a shovel in the ground and going to town. You'd see a lot more activity around, um, because it takes a lot to go through this, right? And first and foremost, I should have started with this. Thank you guys for your time. I know you guys had a very busy schedule, so thank you for taking the time to. Stay and discuss this with us, but, um. You, you know, that's, that's why we're here asking for that. We want to deliver a quality project. Um, there are tools in place that can, can help, uh, achieve that goal. Um, you know, with your support and, and that's what we're here to ask you for. And, uh, you know, if we didn't have to be here, we, we'd certainly. You know, uh, be out doing it, but it's important to deliver the quality project that Dan and his team are on to deliver.
I have some questions.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, um, I think I heard. What you said, that if we turn this down, that a higher authority would not be able to. Impose this or, um, allow it to happen without our, our authority?
Yeah, oh yeah, if it doesn't get approved here, it doesn't go anywhere.
It doesn't go anywhere, okay. Just wanted to be clear because there's some other things going on in the state that. Rental inspections, is that? Part of the?
No, no, that, that's not a MISHDA requirement. You mean like health safety? No, no, that's not something we would.
Yeah, have our own, right.
Sometimes with government programs, there are requirements.
That's not part of it.
Okay, um, if we approve thi-this tip, does this prevent us from approving tips for other developments?
No, as you could, there's unlimited capacity to make projects happen using this tool. Yep.
Okay.
On, on the health, if I could just add, any reputable management company. You know, there's, there's social media out there now, so any reputable management company that's not gonna, you know, keep their standards high will, will get. Will get noticed and that reflects upon ownership. So, you know, they, they, they would be the ones that would be responsible for that. Uh, but as, as far as, you know, obviously keeping and maintain, uh, keeping and maintaining the facility. Um, you know, in, in a, in a good, good nature, so.
Yeah, and when this was in front of the board before, I had asked for how much a, a unit would rent for, and you didn't have those numbers. This is the first we're seeing.
I didn't have with me at that meeting. I said I had the numbers, who could it, yesterday? We never followed up.
And, and you said that this is a recent, um, conversation with the township or with, or this idea for the TIF for your.
No, we, we, we started it, uh, with Nathan, probably in March or so, March, April. We, when did we meet here?
I feel like it was late summer.
Yeah, well. Anyway, we, we, we talked to the planner, to Laura about it. Told her what we were trying to do because there was a lot of push to create it. There was a lot of things that were desired by the township. Well, how do you pay for that? And so we started looking for ways, how do you pay for that, especially affordable housing? Cause there's no way you can do it in the market the way it is. And this program came up. And, uh, to Nathan and to Jared. Because I, I've done a Brownfield program with Nathan previous to this in, in, uh, Ann Arbor. In fact, we did two of them. And so this program came up and we, I was familiar with it, so we sat down and talked about the program. But it was new, so it took us probably several months really to come to. Something that would work for you and Jared and, and that work made sense. And that's where this came from.
You know, I always do my best to get the plan to a point where I feel like. Uh, not that I can support it, but that I can say, this plan is a reasonable plan. It meets the intent of the program and that's kind of what I've been saying tonight. Um, and, and we, it has been reviewed by three of my authority members as well because they like to help. Uh, make sure, you know, the TIF table is in the proper format and other things are in there. And so. And that helps it go smoother as it goes through the process. So we've been, you know, we've reviewed this, we've kind of assisted in this plan to the point where. You see it today.
And when we met this summer, you were just getting started looking at it, right?
Yeah, I mean, that was the first time I saw like the full, the middle.
That's, that's what I thought. You, you didn't come, when we met this summer, you weren't coming with a presentation like this.
No, 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 it was just, hey, come to a meeting, we're gonna talk to some township people.
I think part of the disconnect here, maybe that we had a township manager at the time who was sort of, I, I, in my. My impression is she was kind of riding herd on this as well. I wasn't as involved then as I have been. Uh, since her departure. In fact, I think that Zoom meeting that we had in September, I, uh, that was the first time that I. That Zoom meeting that we had in September, I, uh that was the first time that I talked with all of you at once.
Julian, are you done with questions?
Well, it's just a little, having this presentation four weeks ago and this wasn't brought up to us. And maybe it was just a disconnect with internal and coming to the board, but no, that, that was my. My last question was, um.
Well, Nathan, you haven't, is it, may I be real?
Yeah, please, please go ahead.
So you haven't been, you haven't done any of these in Washington counting that, uh with Brownfield or affordable housing?
Um when you say done, there, there's, there's none that have gone through the process. I have been talking to developers like crazy, mostly in Ann Arbor, some in Ipsy, for a year and a half now.
Yeah, like it hasn't happened in Ann Arbor, Ipsy yet?
We're close, in fact, I think one in south side of Ann Arbor just was officially submitted uh three or five days ago. So it's happening, it's gonna come fast, I think, everybody's trying to figure it out, they're trying to. Uh for example, we have found that if you go sixty percent A M I, the, the subsidy ends up being so big, you can't pay it off in thirty years. So we're, we're, we're figuring this out, and so that's why you're probably gonna see more eighty, hundred percent rather than sixty. Because the TIF, the TIF just gets too big, just one example of things. Well, it would, it would be, it would be a higher rent and less subsidy.
Right, yeah, that, that was kind of one, one of my questions too, is what, what that hundred percent looks like roughly.
Oh, you wanna know like the, the rent numbers or?
I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the financing gap, it sounds like, okay, thank you so much. And, and just, just roughly, like I understand the seven point two million, the housing central rent block, that's revenue neutral, right? Cause you know, that should be equivalent to the relative subsidy people are getting. And then number two and three, infrastructure and site preparation, that totals, what are we at, like eleven point four million dollars? I mean, it's for things like one point six million in mass grading, one point one million in land balancing. Five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars in retaining walls, I know stuff's expensive, but. I mean, is there really an eleven and a half million dollar financing gap to just start digging?
So, part of that is driven by the term of the reimbursement too, so right now it's, right now, using these numbers. It's about eighteen year reimbursement period, a twenty year commitment, so there's a two year tail of, of no reimbursement. Um that, you know, they have that uh attainability commitment too. Um so through that and trying to balance a percentage of the units along with the number to fill the gap. You, I, to a certain extent, you have that kind of tug of war, so to speak, right, we can, we can add more units. But then you start getting a longer period of time out there that doesn't quite match up, so it, to Nathan's point. You know, we're, we're trying to get to a number in, in this model, right? Which is what I think he mentioned, we, you know, he kind of threw himself under the bus a little bit, but we took his direction. And I thought it was a good one, what we're hearing is that, you know, maybe we'd look closer at the temp of rent loss piece and not some of these other items.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's just the, you know, coming, I don't know if it's that so much, it's, it's just the like, I mean. We just approved something that had X number of units, we expected somebody had a plan to build. And now.
And there is a plan to build.
Okay, so, and, and then, and I understand, you know, maybe coming back to say like, hey, and if we do this tip. We could make Y number of units affordable, I would understand that, I would prefer to have had that earlier, that's okay, I would understand that. What troubles me is saying, hey, six weeks ago, prove this, and there's a big financing gap. Like take the affordable housing out of it, there's eleven point three million, or whatever the number is of money that we don't have. And we need subsidized by the government.
Well, there, there's, uh, uh, so two points on that, one, I know we keep going back to the timing of the P U D and, and again. You know, we'll fall on the sword and say, we took some direction, it was, it was, you know, I don't wanna say not good direction, but you know.
It's okay, I'm just saying, there, there's a big, it sounds like there's a significant financing gap.
Well, yeah, there's a financing gap to deliver, to deliver a project of this quality. Uh what the other, the other comment I'd say, and, and I'm not saying that, you know, because of the volatility of, of numbers. Until you can be able to close on your financing, you know, that, that's, that's a real problem. Um you know, I, I, I would, I know you mentioned earlier about possibly revisiting that process. I, I, I think it's hard pressed to find somebody um on a project of this size. That day one, that their P U D, that they've got everything locked in to be able to start moving dirt the next day. It's just that difficult, that you're not gonna commit, get commitments until, so.
Yeah, but just like even having, you know, let's say that there, and, and I'm not trying to talk about process here. It's just, it's unfortunate that we are where we are, I think, um so with the financing gap, I guess what I. Would want to be persuaded of, um if possible, and I don't know if it is. Is why is a financing gap of this magnitude, the responsibility of the government?
Because it's a commitment to maintain attainability for a period of time, and quite frankly. The governor has just come out tasked Mish, Mishta with delivering these units. And they, and they can't do it because they don't have enough people in line that are signing up.
I understand that, and I will tell you, I thought six weeks ago, we approved. Uh, uh, good plan for X units to be built, and this program seems to be designed. To incentivize the creation of housing.
Just creates a forty three units of, of affordable housing.
No, and, and I, I know we keep coming back to that again, you know, shame on us for not, and you know.
No, and I don't, and I don't, I don't even really care, care about that, I'm just saying, it's just, um.
I, I know, it, it keeps coming up, so I want, I just wanna address it, like, we, we didn't know, and I think it was the township manager, actually, she couldn't make it to the meeting, I think.
I don't remember, but I, you know, the details don't matter to me, is what I'm saying about that point, I'm just, it's just, it sounds like there's a. A significant financing gap, and we're being asked, you know, to, to, to do a, a tip. And so I'm just trying to understand where the additional public gain is from where we were six weeks ago. When I thought this was already, you know, happening.
Jessica, I think you're really focused on the timing here, and I, I always advise communities to take those two things together. So that this confusion doesn't happen.
Yeah, and it's not, it's just frustration, i- it's, it's not confusion, it's, it's mostly, it's mostly fresh frustration. About, because I think.
You wanna have the whole picture when you make a decision. We've been, you know, I've been talking to uh Laura and other people at the township for six months now, I, I, I know I brought it up. And I would have advised, this should go together. I don't know what decision went into the P U D going first and this coming now separate, but I, I don't advise this generally, cause I would wanna have the whole picture. You know, I think you're getting caught up on that and that's understandable, um you wanna have all the information at your fingertips.
Right, we, we already made a deal with Dan and now it's changing.
Trusty riser.
Nathan, is all multifamily housing gonna come with this Brownfield request in the future, likely?
No, but I can tell you, this same discussion is happening everywhere, in Ypsilanti, in downtown Ann Arbor. It, this is not unique, this is, everything he's saying is true of the market and deals are much, much harder to.
Or is that because Whitmer said, you know, let's add in the legislature, let's add. Um for, or housing to the Brownfield and it's just.
Money.
Bad, bad practice for developers to not at least, aren't they duty bound to ask for the money if it's there for the taking? I know, but half dozen projects that are fundable because of the increase in costs. The loaned value ratio has gone from the, the bank's loaning debt of, of, of seventy, eighty percent. To now they're loaning fifty, sixty percent, then you have your interest rates going up from three to eight percent. All of those put a lot of projects on hold, and what the governor has done with this is try to offset that. There's, why are things so expensive? Because there's a lot of demand, and it keeps going up. I don't know how people can afford the rent or buy, Ann Arbor now, what used to cost two hundred thousand is worth four hundred thousand. It's supply and demand, what they're trying to do is increase the supply.
And then it seemed like you had something to say there.
Oh, I just said it's a tool, yeah, this is a discretionary tool, it's a policy decision in, in the end of the day, okay?
Municipalities are just gonna get asked every time, right?
If, what I would say to that is, if somebody can do it without, they're, they're, they're not gonna go through this whole process, right? You, you know, you, it, it's, it's not a check the box and you get it type of, you know, or an incentive, it's.
For luxury infill, you don't need it, but you do it when you're doing multifamily?
That's why we need a policy job.
Well, for luxury infill, you can charge a lot of, a lot more.
Right, that's bad.
You're, you're, you know, your, your pool of buyers is limited, right, if you're trying to deliver a product to, to target that market. Um, you know, in a perfect world, everybody would have way higher wages and could afford way more in rent of what it costs to justify to build it these days. But we're certainly not there, um but you know, there's a continuing demand for it.
You need the, oh, sorry.
Sure. With these other developments that we've seen progress in Ottawa and Grand Rapids. What percentage of the units were workforce housing in their particular?
Yeah, so the, the first one that Plainfield Township did was a hundred percent. But it was an eighteen unit project mixed use, the second one, um I think they landed on twenty percent. Most people seem to be landing around twenty to twenty five percent of, of the units. Um, I had one in Hastings that was approved last week. Um, that was their first, first housing deal that they did, that one was twenty percent. That was at a hundred percent area median income. But when you, you know, I, and I know the dollar figure looks large, but when you look in comparison to the overall investment. Like, that's typically what people are trying to fill in order to make the deals work. If you look at, even from the M E D C standpoint, you know, twenty to twenty five percent. In that, it can typically work with a balance of equity and debt and make, make the deal work.
I just wanted to, John, something you said um spurred a thought about just like, you know, you're asking questions of like, well, well, every. Local unit just get hit up with request after request after request, like it's available, so that's necessary. And I, I just think it, it just underscored that I'd like the township. To be proactive about when we, you consider using these subsidies. Cause they're a great tool, I agree, but I would ask maybe Nathan, um, you know, not tonight. But maybe in future meetings with the new board, if he could kind of um work with you, um on kind of helping us. Like better assess when there's a housing project coming forward that might be good for this, cause I, I raised the Goodrich example. Only because it's, you know, something we just approved, you know, I don't know, six, nine months ago, and, and we, we were starting to talk about those. I don't know if it'll come to fruition, it's also a P U D, there's lots of variables, but I would really appreciate your expertise, Nathan. And like helping us think through, like, okay, when a project is submitted, flagging it. Understanding that we are all committed to housing, and how can the township kind of take lead on like, hey. Maybe this would be good for it, maybe this would be good for our pilot, something like that, and I don't know if you have any jurisdictions who are proactive like that. Or if all of us are kind of reactive to whatever proposal comes to us.
It's be reactive, but you do, you know, Ann Arbor's been talking about modifying their property policy. Honestly, we, it's been pushed back because it's a moving target, uh we're trying to figure this out, we're trying to build the plane in the, in the, in the sky. As, or, you know, when we fly in it, um so I, I don't think me coming here in a vacuum and trying to walk the township through. Coming up with a policy would be very fruitful right now, I think we have to test this out, let's get some projects under our belt. Let's get a little bit better at it everywhere, um Dexter is trying to come up with a policy.
And, and I don't even know it needs to be, John, like, we have three housing proposals in the mix right now, okay? This one, Goodrich, and what's the one down Jackson?
Would you come, oh, or down, further down west?
Yeah, that's what you consider. The Park Road, so there's only three, so I'm, I guess not, maybe policy isn't the right word, but just some sort of like criteria. So we can sit down and look at everything that's been submitted and kind of just think through strategically. Where, which project it would make sense to use some public subsidy for.
I am available.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you very much for coming tonight and, and handling all of these questions. Waiting so long to have a chance to give your presentation, um and it sounds like, um Kathy, you have an idea for some conversation. Internal conversation.
Well, I'm having increasingly frequent conversations with Laura.
Right.
And Mariah too, so yes, there will be conversation.
So, so Nathan, what is um the Brownfield authorities timeline for this, or what, what's the timeline?
Entirely dependent on you all.
We, we start the process, if it's, if it goes, if South Township votes in favor of moving this forward, then it goes to the county.
Right, it's not gonna go anywhere where this is our first stop. And this is where honestly, I put in most of the work, is try to get, get the parties together. Get some of my board members that are experienced, to get them to see the plan, so that, again, I can present it to you and say, it's a reasonable plan. But I, I don't ever wanna be here and say, and not be able to at least say that the plan is reasonable and it's.
This is a plan that you approve of.
It's a plan, yes, and I, it's ready for this step, let's put it that way, it's ready for you all to, to review it. And I think it's within the program guidelines, and it's, it's, it's something you all could consider uh for sure.
Especially if you wanna have housing at less than market rate, that's what the program is for, that's the way we used it. So I was just looking at it that way, and if it's just a return of funds, you're not, people aren't gonna do it, so there has to be some incentive. As Nathan suggested, so there's, there is where the rubber beats the road, what is that incentive piece, okay? So Nathan put together one incentive piece that he thought made sense, and we essentially followed your lead on this. And so there's other incentive pieces that could make sense too, but that's the way it's set up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, I just wanna, I, I would also just encourage, this would be an important topic for the new board to be involved with. So I just wanna. I agree, so I, I mean, I would just make a motion that we um not have this topic returned until the new board is in place.
I'll support that, that's fine, but I mean, it's fine.
So we have a motion on the table from Flintoff, support by Noel, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
You're a no?
Yeah, I'm a no.
Okay, can we just do a quick roll call, so I have that, um Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yeah.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
Yes.
Yes, Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, motion adopted five to one.
All right, let's move on. Um, this is the item K one, approval to change the reporting structure during the interim period. I think the votes are all there for this, if we just wanted to move forward.
I would move the amount of motion and attach resolution there too.
All right, so we have a motion by Riser to approve the reporting structure to be changed from supervisor to the office coordinator with respect to the fire chief. Parks director and project manager, and to assist with the transition, ask the supervisor to submit a brief written report to the board of trustees. With the status of the project's ongoing work with the fire chief, parks director and project manager, and I should just point out that there is actually a resolution. That was distributed hard copy at the beginning of the meeting, because um it was discussed this morning that it has to be in the form of a resolution. Um so.
Which I moved.
Right, which you moved, so um if you please call the roll.
Okay, so moved by Riser and support by Noel, okay, right, okay, um Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, five to one.
And I'd like to say I'm voting no. No, it's five one.
Okay.
I'm voting no because the supervisor, I statue, is the person that. Department heads that send a report to us, unless you have a manager, which we. Private heads that send a report to unless you have a manager, which we at this point do not have management. So we should follow the statute.
All right, let's move on to item K two. That's consideration of the purchase of two vacant parcels. And this was prepared by Christie.
Yeah, so this is the two vacant parcels that. Mariah's at the signed purchase agreement for, for a hundred and two thousand of Dexter and Arbor roads. That we went into closed session for a few meetings ago.
Sure, so you'll remember that we discussed, um, the, the purchasing these two properties. We do feel that there is a public purpose for the township owning those two properties. They had been, um. Tentatively offered by the property owner, uh, at a, at a specific price. We negotiated a different price, which is what's on the purchase agreement. Um, I sent him a purchase agreement last week expecting some. Negotiation and he signed it and that's what's before you today. So we're just asking that the board authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign that purchase agreement and move forward with the purchase.
I would move the bottom motion, support.
So, uh, Riser's moved the motion, Palmer supports to approve the purchase of two vacant parcels of land on Dexter and Arbor Road. H dash zero eight dash two four dash three five zero dash zero zero four. And H dash zero eight dash two four dash three five zero dash zero zero five. For the purchase price of a hundred and two thousand dollars from fund one oh one dash nine oh one slash nine seven one. And to authorize the clerk and supervisor to sign the purchase agreement.
Can just make a comment just for the benefit of the public. We've talked about this one time before. Our discussion was in closed session, so I want to share a little bit about, um, why I'm, I'm supporting this. And what public purpose there is. Um, these are two strange little parcels. At Dexter and Arbor and Wagner, um, they are difficult to impossible to develop. They have a lot of nice trees, um, there, which the township would plan to keep in place. The potential public purpose, there's a couple. One, um, is related to transit. In terms of potential improvements for bus stops in that area. The other one, and, and one that really piqued my interest and why I, I brought this to everyone's attention, um, is, is related to the potential. Water and sewer infrastructure, um, so that that land, I think the township holding it provides us, um, enough, in a position. Where we have a little more, um, control over, you know, any kind of extension of the water system, for example. Um, and we had, because of the natural value too, this property also did first apply to the open space fund. Following our Order of Resource Use Fund policy to first try for the dedicated stores. The LPC did not rank it high enough, um, to recommend it to the board of trustees. So that's why it's come back as a general fund.
Unless there's further comment, please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Thanks for your work on this, Mariah. You did a great job.
Okay, well, that brings us to public comment round two. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the perjury of the board of trustees. Trustee Riser, will you once again?
Give me just a minute. I'm sorry, but I apparently walked out early. Did the motion just pass at this thing or stable?
Um, it's, um.
We're about to have public comment if you want to start.
We, we were about to have public comment, but just to clarify, the, the motion was to put this before the incoming board.
Well.
We just handled another item.
The motion passed?
Yeah, if you'd like to be the first to participate in public comment, you're sitting at the table, you have three minutes.
Yeah, the, the motion we passed was to, um, bring this item back. Um, at some point that the new board is in place, that's November twentieth.
Well, I, I am not in support of that one bit. For one, the new board is not going to deal with this in a way that's, that I consider to be reasonable. We've been going through this for a long time. We, this thing was bifurcated into two parts because we were told to do that by the planner. Okay, and by the, by other people on this, in this organization. All right. You are against this project no matter what. You have made that very clear. And with a new board, there's no way that it'll ever pass anything. So that's what you've done. All right?
Judy Monk? Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. I don't know if you realize it, but the three individuals that are here. Are going to be on the board. So to say it will not pass and to say it will not get full hearing is sad. Because we stayed here until eleven o'clock at night, so we could hear this entire presentation.
I'm, I'm very pleased that you three are on the board. I didn't know that.
Well, maybe.
And I, I just lived here since eighty seven.
Excuse me, you owe us an apology because we are going to be sitting in those seats listening. For the entire presentation. We've attended other meetings.
But you've interrupted the entire meeting. I've sat right there and listened to you.
All I'm asking is to give us a chance.
Judy, can I ask, this is public comment. You're supposed to direct your comments this direction, not that direction.
Sir, that is exiting the room. I wish you would have given us some credit for listening. So I appreciate you, um, I guess, hearing him out at nauseam. And kicking it down the road so we can get a more complete.
More time and information.
Yes, more information and see their site plan and, and better understand. Because I think what they said is that it's not a fully baked program. The development came in as fully baked. The program is not fully baked. Now I want to say thank you for passing and sticking with our ordinance and, and. Paying for the bills that need to be paid per our ordinance. And, um, Donna, thanks for your service. After all these years and everyone else who contributed really positively to the meeting tonight. Thank you.
And, and thank you, three. I'm so excited that we have three incoming board members. Who are so on top of it and have been, um, so engaged and well educated and informed. So appreciate all three of you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Please come forward.
Renee Klubek, Siouxsie resident taxpayer. No, I'm not going to be a trustee and I'm sure you're all pleased with that. I want to thank you for all the work tonight. I saw everybody from legal to trustees, everyone, and even I would like to say thank you for, um. Supervisor Hathaway for listening to a lot that was said this evening and taking a counsel on the right thing. I, I'd like to make a comment on what was just presented, especially since that was the man that bullied me at his last presentation directly. And told me to shut up. That word is not said by my grandchildren or was never said by my children. And I'd like you to know who you're dealing with, so please put that on the record. Secondly, I went to the township, um, to the fire department presentation Saturday morning. And there was a very small number of us there, but it was very evident to me, something that I think is important with regards to what I learned tonight. About if you were indeed to support the builder's bullying proposition to make a change in what was already passed. A month ago, I sat in a room and three people from the township fought against providing. The, the, the new village that's going to happen, that we're putting on to be voted on about what we need for the fire defense in this township. Three strong minded men refused to say that there was a need enough for them to pay. And the average doubt, which was presented so well by the chief on an approximate five hundred thousand dollar home. Was literally three hundred and thirty-eight dollars increase annually. In their fire assessment. And I'm going to tell you, if you have to come back and present to Siouxsie Township residents. That are struggling to pay enough in their taxes to get a fire ladder, to get a second building. And you start presenting for people that haven't lived here and may be extremely transient from the university, housing and everything else. I just want you to understand what the public out there is, is thinking. Three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, three people in a room of five are going to turn down the proposition on the fire. That's approximately what we pay for cable and internet at our home on a monthly basis. And I'm, I'm ashamed at those people not doing it, but you're up against this with taxes. So I thought it might be helpful for you to hear that. Thanks again for all your effort to see the energy.
Well, thanks, everybody. It's a pretty day today with the beautiful leaves. I watched the ad hoc meeting. I don't know what, whatever that was, two of them for the manager, because I've had things with managers. And, um, yeah, because I, they haven't listened about anything, whether you're getting killed out on Z Road or sewer and water or whatever it is. And when somebody's making a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars as a manager, if we're going to have a. And, and no, you, you had actually more representative, and I liked Rowley, you know, he tried to set some rules. And he was a hundred thousand dollars. He was doing all that work and taking abuse, but I liked when I heard. We're going to have these different managers, utility manager, this, we're going to get a finance. I don't think we need to be paying somebody. A huge amount of money. We already have all these managers and we need the workers and that's just, just my thought on that. And I'm glad, I didn't know what the land was. I'm really happy about that because we had the other piece of property for sewer and I, I think I spoke and I said, I don't want that sold either. Because my, my big huge thing is sewer and water. You got the common thing. You know what? Maybe the rubbers hit the road and we've got the best technology we can versus dumping it in there. I'm not going to go and weigh in on it. But I follow the whole thing. I get stuff from Eagle. So I'm glad about the, you could extend the water for the people. I don't live down there, but I'm just saying, I really appreciate. I'm, I'm a real practical person and I look at that and I, and Donna and I. Kind of mix over that. I really like, I'm kind of a frugal person, even though I will. You know, when I have the money, go out and go to the French Laundry, how's that? But, uh, twice, how's that? But anyway, so I really, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I'm, it, it's unfortunate we've had to have this. Thing over in email because it's happened at the University of Zoning Talks and it didn't go to. And I'm, I'm, it made me really sad to tell you the truth. And that's it. And I appreciate it. And I follow everything.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone participating remotely who has a comment?
First, first up is Rob Pattinson. Hi, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Siouxsie Township president. That meeting just now with Crossroads was very telling, especially the end of it. Obviously, Dan was, was confident that this would be on the next agenda as an action item. And Mark, Mark Brzezow would show up and vote for it like he did last time. So this was going to get snuck onto the, the next, uh, agenda. And thank you very, very much, Clerk Flintoff, for.
You're welcome.
Putting something in place to prevent that. An, another dirty trick that we fortunately have avoided. Since when is seventeen hundred dollars a month affordable housing? It's been a while since I've rented, but holy cow, that is a lot of money for a very small apartment for rent. And who decides what eighty percent is? Is it the developer? Is it the township? Is it the brownfield? That was never established where that eighty percent number comes from for the next twenty years. And our fire department, it needs millions of dollars in support. And Dan offered ninety thousand dollars last time. And now he comes back and he's asking for eighteen million dollars from us. That's pretty rich. Uh, the, the, uh, the arrogance and the conceit and the, um. It, it's just very telling. And then, uh, the triangle at the southeast corner of Dexter and Wagner. Is the property that you just bought. When it was in the agenda packet, I looked up the, the parcel numbers, but there was no address for them. So you couldn't tell where they were. Thank you very much for pointing that out. I just went into BS and E. And it is indeed that southeast corner of, um, of Wagner and Dexter. Right where the, the bus and transit committee was talking about putting one of the, the, uh, bus stops. So that's very helpful to know. And then lastly, um, Supervisor Hathaway. You got to look in the mirror tonight and realize that you laughed maniacally. At trustee Noel when she was trying to explain to you that you had a conflict of interest. And it took trustee Riser about fifteen seconds to convince you that you had a conflict of, of interest. That unbalance in your perspective, uh, I think might be telling of something. A deeper problem and, and obviously you've had trouble with women for a long time and in, on this board and in this township. And, uh, you might want to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other interested public, please raise your hand. Okay, I see none. I did just want to make one brief comment for the record related to Dan. I would just say for the record one more time, and it just, you know, this red screaming face finger pointing. Is why I want to respond, but as I made clear in the last PUD, when it was a commercial development, I was supportive. And when it became residential, we were going to have people living across there. I made my concerns about the air quality clear. I am supportive of the TIP program. I, I think this isn't the right project for it, but I look forward to the new board, um, digging into all those issues more.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
By Riser?
Moving by Riser, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. We are adjourned.
Land does, main does.
Thank you, everybody.